Good evening, everyone. This is a reorganization board meeting, so superintendent calls the meeting to order. It's the only thing I can do all year. So we start the meeting, calling the meeting to order at 6:35. Sorry, audience, we had some board learning to do prior to this. So, opening the board meeting, this is a board where the election of board officers takes place. Is there a nomination, once the nomination for the board chair and the board chair is elected, he or she will take over? Do I have a nomination for a board chair?
Yes, I would like to nominate Martha Heath as board chair, if she is willing.
Is that a willing? Any discussion? We don't need a second, correct? All those in favor of Martha Heath being board chair, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there other nominations to be considered, or is she...
Are there other nominations to be considered?
Aye.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of Martha Heath being board chair, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ayes have it. Congratulations, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you. I hope we have slightly better gear this year. My other dream is that we will function even more as a single district over the coming year. So, next up is nomination for vice chair. Are there any nominations?
Nomination, Kim Gleason, vice chair.
Okay, Kim is nominated. Are there any other nominations? I will declare the nominations closed and ask that we cast a single ballot for Kim Gleason as vice chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Congratulations, Kim. This might be a great time to announce that Kim was just appointed today by Hank Scott to serve on the State Board of Education. So, congratulations.
To bring our experiences and the board, but there's not a school board voice on the board right now. There will be tomorrow.
Oh, look at that.
There has been before, but there's not been just recently, so.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Okay, next, I'm not entertaining motion, nomination for clerk.
I'd like to nominate Patrick Murray.
Okay, are there any other nominations? All right, if not, I'll declare the nominations closed and ask that we cast one ballot for Patrick Murray for clerk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And as I said in an email to you today, it's our intention to do something that was talked about when we first organized and bring Patrick as the clerk into the board agenda meetings. All right, I think it would be great if we could handle the next item with a single motion, but I think first, is there anything on that list that someone wants to pull out for discussion?
Yes, the Burlington Free Press as the paper of record.
I think we've just, okay, yeah, all right. We'll call back. Anything else?
Do we need to do anything about signing the Code of Ethics?
Yes, yes.
But that can be done without a separate discussion?
Yes, that can just be passed around, hence we have accepted it. Thanks, Kim. Anything else?
Okay, I have a question. We have affirmed the annual minutes in this first part, and under number four, we have annual meeting.
Correct, it should be here.
It should be here.
So we'll take it out of the consent agenda.
So, it should be here?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to pull it because there's some corrections.
All right, then, given that, oh, I entertain a motion to appoint the firm of Miguel Letty and Sheen as our legal counsel, set monthly meetings from the first and third Tuesday of each month, authorize the superintendent to accept and administer extra grants and funds, grant the administration the authority to pay bills, authorize the clerk or chair to sign warrants on behalf of the board and accept the AWSD, I'm going to call it Code of Ethics. Thank you, Brendan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Newspaper record, Diana Foulieson, we have used the Burlington Free Press is that the Essex Reporter is not distributed in Westford. Did you have a different idea?
Well, considering the dwindling subscriptions and limited ability now of Burlington Free Press, quite frankly, I found it hard a few times to get, you know, find it on Sundays. I was wondering if it's in our interest, and since they're not as widely distributed, that we might consider seven days instead.
Some folks are...
Quite frankly, Burlington, City of Burlington and a few others have indeed done that by having that. So I'm just putting it out for discussion because I'm concerned that it too is not as robust as it used to be.
Correct, I agree. I'm sorry, I anticipated what you were going to say, and I shouldn't have. What do folks think, Patrick?
I just want to make sure, I think this was something we maybe discussed last year, but was there an issue because it was not a daily newspaper, seven days of the Essex Reporter, that we weren't able to use them as a newspaper record?
Correct. We need something that comes out daily basis.
Okay, I thought so, I just wanted to make sure I was remembering correctly.
Any further discussion?
Are we able to have, I mean, I know we need to, being of record means of one, but is it possible that we would have two outlets that we would...
I think it doesn't prevent us from using any other publications, it just means when we have an official notice that requires us to go to the newspaper record, that that's where we, one place we have to use. Are we...
So, carrying on from Brendan's question, that would prohibit us from having three papers of record by the same token?
It doesn't prevent us from using any other publication, but this is the one we have to use.
The one of record.
Right.
So we get, we get alternate, we get, as an option, we could choose to do other, use other papers, but the one we would have to use would be the one...
Right, correct, correct. Okay, I entertain a motion that we approve the Burlington Free Press as the newspaper of record. I'll make some motion. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, annual meeting minutes, Diana?
Okay, if we could please correct this spelling of Dan Kerin's name, which is K-E-R-I-N. He is a village trustee. That was in Article Three, page two. And can we...
I think it appears twice, so, Kim, Kim, Kim can take their time.
Okay, well, that's one where he's actually making a motion. There's a, the other point I would like to make, since my little research project of voter turnout, I think it would be in our interest and posterity to actually put in the number of how many people were present at the meeting that evening. I know that number's available.
You do?
Yes, I do, okay. And it would, I think it would be in our best interest either from now, going forward, or in the future, to actually have that number as part of the record.
Would you be looking to get that number to Kim, hold to me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else on the annual meeting minutes? All right, I entertain a motion to approve the annual minutes with the understanding that the number of people present will be added, and Dan Kerin's name is spelled correctly.
So moved.
Thank you, Brendan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Great, thanks. We are the organizers. So, next to this comments from the public on items not on the agenda, is anyone here to speak? Yes, some here to speak, but not in this section. Okay, wonderful. So let's move to the consent agenda. So we're going to pull the annual meeting minutes off from the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything else? All right, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda of school board minutes of April 2nd, school board year book study minutes of February 5th, March 19th, and April 2nd, to approve warrants to make the following professional appointments. Elizabeth Allen as a Point Two FTEK-5 math coach, Kim Wesley-Adet as a Point Eight FTEK-8 math coach, Will Bowman as a full-time computer animation web design instructor CTE, Brian Clark as the assistant principal of A.T.L., Colleen McLeary as a temporary one-year grade four teacher at Thunders, Jamie McCarthy as a temporary one-year full-time grade five teacher at Thunders, Carrie Pearson as a full-time speech language pathologist at Summit, and Kelly Ponslet as a temporary one-year third-grade teacher at Summit. Also, on the consent agenda, to approve a leave for Joel Rasko, a PE teacher at Kaila Latha, and to approve a breath reduction in fours of Matthew Zimmerman from a professional foods position at CTE.
And warrants.
Pardon?
And warrants. The warrants, and approve the warrants.
I said that.
Okay. She was just going through names, I think.
Anything, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Patrick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, hey, my apologies for the audience for having a chunk of stuff we had to get through early tonight. Welcome to home, you, and I'll turn it over to...
So welcome, everyone. This started because Laura wanted to invite a teacher that does flipped classroom. So we talked about student engagement, which is part of our continuous improvement plan, our values and aspirations, each states that each student is engaged and an inspired learner. So I thought it was an opportune time to bring teachers in, which teachers then asked students to come present. So we have some teacher presentations, we have student presentations. I gave the board a list that goes in order from the presentation. We're going to start with our youngest, our kindergarten students, and then we do have a third grade present, video that we will share in the end, that the teacher could not make it tonight. So we'll just go right through. So Cassidy and company.
Hello, my name is Cassidy Shumway, and I teach kindergarten at Westford School, and it is with great honor that I introduce to you three of our kindergarten students. We have Fane, Dylan, and Fane and Dylan will be sharing the story of Fane's Pizza, a story highlighting the importance of peer feedback as well as broken mindset in the classroom. Then Dylan and Maeve will share our process of deciding what's important about a green zone partnership, and how do we talk about books in a kindergarten classroom. Please, Maeve, you can come and take a seat right in the blue chair, and Dylan, why don't you go to the other side of the screen, and we'll start our share.
So this is my pizza book.
And what kind of book were you writing?
A how-to to make pizza.
And what did you need to practice doing?
Um, why do you have this pizza every day?
So every day, Fane drew the same pizza.
This was day one.
And what happened on day one? What did our peers say?
We need a what, what, and see.
And cheese, and we needed some. Dylan, will you help us with remembering some of our feedback?
We need circle for pepperoni, and you need, you should show the slices.
So Fane, what happened on day two with a big voice?
I, I did this pizza, it's some sliced-out pizza.
But did we want the slices out or on the pizza?
On the pizza. Day three, this is, this is, this is my pizza.
Yep, and then, did you draw the slice on the pizza? But were you done yet? No, we needed more help from your community.
Day four.
And what did you draw here? One big...
Slice.
And Clayton said you needed a...
What?
What happened on day five?
This was my pizza on day five.
And what tool did you use to help you?
A ruler.
And what did the ruler help you do?
To make my what?
Were we done yet?
Nope.
His feedback on day five was that he should start adding color to his pizza. He was getting closer to almost being done drawing a pizza.
Day six.
And what happened on day six?
This was my pizza on day six.
And who helped you on day six?
Dylan.
And Dylan, can you tell us a little bit about day six?
Well, on day six, Fane made his sixth pizza, and I helped him, and I made a pizza to help him draw his, and we used color and the feedback from our community to make this his best and final pizza. All my pizza. How do you feel about all these pizzas?
Kind of good.
Mine's...
Oh, I'm not sure how to, oh, just enter.
Oh.
Oh.
Just worked on your final pizza, Dylan, how did you feel?
Good.
What's up? How do you feel about you? Thank you, period.
Did you hit a ski?
Oh, there we go. So now, Dylan, you have our first slide.
This slide, this slideshow slash book is about how our process to be a green zone turn and talk partners. And can you see our turn and talk partnerships? We love to talk about books. First, we made a list about how to be in the green zone while you're in your publishing, and we will listen to the person that is talking and say elbow to elbow need to be, and you have to say, say, I think, and why do you think that, and say, I think that because... And then we practiced in our partnerships. Cassie took lots of things. The next day, we watched our videos, and we were the teachers, and we said what we need to work on. Then we circle what we need, what to work on, using evidence to say why. We practiced, we worked, and worked on saying why.
Oops.
That's okay. So Maeve, what happened when we listened to our next set of videos?
Um, it, we said, um, I think, and we heard, why do you think that, and we heard, I think And now we all know how to be a green zone turn and talk partner, and this is a poster for our classroom, and the title for it says, we are green zone turn and talk partners, and it says what you need to be a turn and talk partner. It says, we listen, we think, we use words to say, tell why. I think that because evidence. And on this page, we were in our talking groups, and we learned that, um, turning and talking helps us. And we are going to show you what a turn and talk partnership looks like.
Dylan and Maeve, let's come to the middle, and you can model it in the middle. So while Dylan and Maeve model for you, what, I would go right in the middle because then everyone can see you. Model for you what a turn and talk partnership looks like. Please listen for it if you're using evidence, which is really what we've practiced a lot in our classroom.
This book is called Scared. Um, I think Scared won't change because of something good you can try. Because it's about a turn brave, because he thought things that, that he was scared of were everywhere, and that's why he didn't leave his nut tree. But then, when something happened, and he learned that he had a flying squirrel, he forgot, he forgot all about the things that he was afraid of, and he knows that they weren't everywhere. And all of this happened because he sees one of the things he's scared of. And he changed his, um, his, like, daily routine from wake up, eat and out, look at the view, eat and out, look at the view, eat and out, look at the view, go to sleep, to wake up, eat and out, look at the view, jump to the unknown, play dead, return home, eat and out, look at the view, eat and out, look at the view, go to sleep. There's a couple things that changed. My book is called My Friends, and it's about a girl, and she learns lots of stuff from And on this page, I put a sticker note here because she, and I wrote happy because she's happy that her friend, the alligator, is teaching her how to nap. And I wrote a little face, and it's sleeping, and I can tell that because her face is sort of happy. And my other sticker note is right here. And I wrote loved on this page, and the sentence says, and I learned to love from a friend like you. And I wrote a big smile on this page, and the reason why I wrote a big smile, because she had a really big smile on her face, and the reason why I wrote loved, because there's a mouse on her head and a star and a moon, and those things make me feel like love.
Dylan, would you like to say our last thing?
And in that basket right there, there are, like, exit tickets that have lines to say what, what you loved about it and what we need to work on.
And so they created their own exit tickets for you, so before you leave this evening, please go out.
And there's something that you write your name.
Yes, and we have a slot for your name, but...
So the next, we have Amy Downing, fourth grade, plumbing.
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade, sorry. You loop, right, though?
Yeah.
So that's a trouble. Have the wrong loop.
Do you want me to advance it, or you can also have that?
Oh, I can.
Just choose some of them. Can I just help play the video?
So, we started this big project, it just kind of fell together organically, just like a son of dominoes. I went in to talk to my teaching partner, Jeff Gilmet, and he was planning a social studies lesson on writing a bill. And he had talked to the kids about, you know, proposing to ban single-use plastic bags, and they had watched a video, and they were kind of pumped up about that. Meanwhile, I'd already prepped an argument essay lesson, and some of my prep contained articles about banning plastic bags. So you're like, hey, this is good, let's go with this, let's see what we can do with it. Meanwhile, Mr. Ryan and Mr. Davidson had, to none of our knowing, planned a whole school assembly about plastic in our oceans and the overuse of plastic in consumption. So the kids came back from that assembly completely... So the kids came back from that assembly completely pumped up, ready to take this on, wanting to change the world. Um, so I said, okay, well, let's, let's dive into this argument essay. So we did that. Um, and then I said to them, you know, we can make this as real as you want. We can dig our heels in as far as you guys want to go. And I said, do you guys want to go for this? And the kid said, yes. Why not, right? Why not go for a real audience and try to make a difference? So we sent our, uh, essays to probably ten different people, different, um, politicians, um, like headquarters of different supermarkets. So, um, yeah, so we took this huge overconsumption of plastic issue and we said, well, what can we really do? And narrowed it down to bags. Let's just focus on this bag issue and see if we can make actually some difference. So the kids decided to make some videos, which they're going to share with you. And we led an assembly to the school. And they taught the entire school how to recycle bags, reusable bags. And these are three of the four students who presented to the school. And they want to now present the rest of this presentation too. So I'm going to turn it over. This is Lauren and Landon and Kaylee. And they're awesome. So I'm just going to turn it right over to them.
Mr. D's class made this video for you.
Hold up. Is this right?
I mean, we learned about three yards reduce, reuse, recycle, right? All our paper and tin cans go in the recycle.
We've got that.
And we know how to compost biodegradable things like algal, causing banana peels.
So how did this plastic bag end up in the ocean?
Most people don't recycle plastic bags. They don't know how.
But I thought recycling was working.
Nope. When we throw plastic bags away, they end up in landfills or in the ocean. They also make our world look really ugly.
Another plastic baggie? This is what's happening to our earth. We're lucky this didn't go into the ocean. If it did, it could hurt even kill marine life.
I know. So many animals are suffering from our mistakes. Plastic is going into the ocean and marine animals can't tell the difference between plastic bags and food.
Yes, that means that the animals try to eat it. This innocent sea turtle could easily mistake a piece of trash for a jellyfish and will die if it does.
Look at this bird. This bird could die because of the plastic bag. Same with this whale. All because of our mistakes, because of our plastic bags. We can't recycle plastic bags with the rest of our recycling at home. Can't we just throw all the plastic bags away?
Well, when you throw them away, the chemicals get into the land and water. There must be a better solution.
The bags are not good for our world, but we really need them for grocery shopping.
We don't need them. They're better ways to shop.
How?
By using reusable bags. Some of them are really cute and some are so small, they can be carried anywhere. These are some.
Some people think we should go back to paper bags.
Really?
Yes, they are better than plastic, but they aren't really a good solution either.
Why?
Well, there are lots of chemicals used to make the paper. So that leads to pollution. Also, they are too expensive to make and change.
Well, now I know to use reusable bags. Don't forget to wash them. I'll remember. I think it's important to try to help the environment.
So today, a ton of people use plastic bags. I wish like, well, that's something to do. We need a solution to this problem.
We can reuse them. I always start a plastic bag trick or treating. Or you can bring your own bags to shop with.
Yes, we're using interviews. Our world's awesome. What there is, one other way, one other side of the sea that is where the.
If they just throw the plastic bag away, nothing bad will happen then.
Whatever you do, you never throw it away. It's recycled at most grocery stores.
Okay, so you're just bringing the plastic to the store and we're done? It's that easy to help the world?
It just takes a little effort to remember to take them.
Yes, and did you know that all plastic bags, including red bags, baggies you have to drop, can be returned to grocery stores too? So many people have known this.
Yeah, the plastic that gets returned to the store is remade into more bags, packing materials. Sometimes they're made into fake wood for decks.
So plastic bags all come to the new store that actively help people.
Yes, yes, yes. We don't need to return our plastic bags to stores for recycling.
Teach your family, spread the word. Don't throw plastic bags away. Recycle and reset.
How do I go to the next video? The afterplay? Okay. Alright. So we have, if we have time, there's another video. Do we have time to show you one more?
Sure.
Sure, okay.
So this video is Ms. Downing's class's video and we made this for adults and older kids.
There's a lot more data involved in this.
I love going through the ocean, but in school I learned that plastic is really hurting our oceans. There's this thing called the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. It's a huge mess and mess of plastic in the ocean. It looks like plastic soup out there.
Ew, I heard that too. Marine animals often mistake plastic as food. For example, turtles often mistake plastic bags as jellyfish, which when they eat, causes slow recognizing.
Yes. Look at these pictures. Over seven hundred species of animals have been reported to have eaten or been ate with plastic. Our bags can kill them. They are too cute to hurt.
Whoa, I should stop using plastic bags and you should too.
Over forty percent of plastic is only used one time. We should try to make a difference here.
Let's start with plastic bags. Plastic bags are totally not worth it. We need to stop using them. Or we at least need to recycle them.
Did you know that two million plastic bags are bought every minute?
And then we only use them for an average of twelve minutes each.
You say that these plastic bags are only used for twelve minutes?
And then the plastic bags sit in landfills for decades. Or in our oceans.
I know. And only one percent of the bags get recycled. That's only one in a hundred.
Wow, I feel like recycling is just not working.
Recycling really isn't working. We need to find another way.
And if this doesn't stop, there'll be more plastic than fish in the ocean in five twenty fifty.
I also read that we can't put the plastic bags in our recycling bins at home.
I heard it was because they get caught up in the machines and the, at the recycling facilities.
So what do we do with the same可以用 plastic bags if we can't put them in these bins?
Let's see what everybody else thinks about the plastic bags. Maybe they have answers.
Did you know that about eight million tons of plastic end up in the ocean every year?
What?
Yeah, it's true. One way to help our oceans would be to stop using single-use bags.
Well, why can't we switch to paper bags? Like Cassie has always asked me, paper or plastic? I say paper.
Paper bags may be better, but they're not the best solution. Maybe that causes air and water pollution for examples.
Paper bags have to use trees and they cost ten pounds more than packs of bags.
I'm not sure that's true.
Yes, it's true.
Whoa, really?
Hey, what are you guys doing?
Oh, just talking about plastic bags.
Well, instead of plastic, I like to use reusable bags. Great job.
My teacher has sent me these little bags and she, that bit right in her book, she also told me that, uh, she got them on Amazon.
Cool, using these can definitely save the ocean.
Well, everyone should get reusable bags, but that may take a while. What do we do with some plastic bags before using now?
Hmm, I can't think of anything.
Here's an idea.
Okay, let's hear it.
Save your plastic bags.
Why should we save our plastic bags?
We can put them in the bins.
What bins?
The plastic recycling is at the grocery store. We can throw our plastic bags in the bins, then the plastic will be melted and remained into other plastic items or artificial lumber.
Wow, so I can bring my plastic grocery bags to these bins?
No, not just your plastic bags.
Sounds like red bags.
These are pork baggies and other plastic bags in these bins.
We can find another local grocery stores.
Like Shaw's, Hanford, and even Price Jumper.
But only one percent of bags are being returned to these bins. That's one in a hundred bags.
Really?
That's true. We need more people to use these bins.
So start coming to your family and friends who use these bins to save our oceans.
So it sounds like in our homes, classrooms, and workplaces, we need to have a trash can, a recycling bin, a compost bin, and a plastic bag to keep plastic in.
Being responsible and taking care of our waste can help our community, our state, and our future.
So by taking a stand and being responsible with your waste, you could be a hero.
Yay!
Changes we made at school. We now have a box or bag in every classroom to put plastic bags in. And also whenever possible, we use reusable bags or containers.
Changes many of us made at home. We created a space in our pantry or kitchen to put plastic bags, plastic wrap, and all sorts of other plastic items. And then we return them to the grocery stores so they can be melted into different things. And we use reusable bags whenever possible. And when the cat here asks if we want a plastic bag, we say.
No, thank you.
Over the last three weeks, Fleming School has collected all of these plastic from going to landfills. Save some money.
We heard back from sev- several of the people we sent our argument essays to, the Vermont Senate agrees that we should ban single-use bags.
We hope that this presentation was educational to everybody here so you can learn that plastic bags are not only helpful, but they are also a monster. Thank you for hav- for having us present.
Thank you.
Sarah from Founders. She has a group with her also and she is fifth grade. Alright, so I brought three of my students with me because they will be better speakers than I. Uh, but in our classroom, I try really hard to get to know everyone's passions so that when there's an opportunity to help them explore those passions and connect what they're learning in our regular curriculum to their passions, they get to do that. So I have Kedrian who will talk a little bit about something fun that he's recently done and actually won. Um, and then I have Lucy and Emma who are going to talk about a project that they're working on. And I'm going to let them steal the show, not me.
So. Hi, my name is Kedrian Gerchek and I'm here to just talk about how I think extracurricular work can help kids like learn better. So, um, and it's mainly going to be based about like for an example of this project I did. It's, oh, for a math fair, which was introduced to me and, uh, it was introduced to me by my teacher Mosaic. And it was introduced to me and a few other kids in my class and they all participated. And for, when I worked on it, I had to like do the research and it took a while. And like I chose the subject, I had to choose the subject and do all this research. And then I realized that this subject, Ohm's Law, is also a linear equation. So I did that and I did a bunch of research on it. And then after I did all that research, I had to like plan out like how like it'll all look good on a poster, which took a really long time. Um, I also just, I made like a ton of revise, like I revised it a lot through all that process. And then after that, I came up with an experiment to do. And when I participated in the math fair, I showed the experiment and stuff, but I didn't bring it. Um, and so then after that, I had to do, like, I had to then look over it like a million times to make sure that I had it right. And then, um, I had to make a speech and then memorize that speech. And then I had to go to actual math fair and then I had to present. And I, like, all that stuff from doing all of that process, it all just like drilled it into my brain. So I think that would definitely, all that would help me learn like a lot better. And I think also a large part in that is like the motivation stuff, which I think with this, since like I personally would like, like math and I'm just like good in that area. And I, um, so I was like really motivated to do this. So since, like, I think a lot of the part of me learning this is that since I was motivated, motivated for it, I like really want, like, I wanted to do this research and I think that definitely helped with the learning too. Does anyone have any questions?
Kedrian, what happened at the math fair? How did it go?
It was good. I had to present and stuff. There is, um, two things I had set up. There is a, um, this like snap circuit, circuit board I had set up. And that represented what I did in this project. And then I also had a computer set up. I had done this like little coding project where it was like, uh, I used Ohm's Law. Like it was almost like an Ohm's Law calculator thing and you could enter stuff and it would spit some numbers out.
Um, was this like mostly done in school or did you have to put in time?
No, I, I did this all like at home.
Oh, okay.
I did a little bit of research at school, but most of this was all at home.
Oh, and your coding, coding experience, was that from school or just like outside?
No, I also learned that outside of school.
That's cool. Kedrian, what happened at the end of the math fair?
I won.
I'm Lucy.
And I'm Emma.
And we are, we were working on a project out during and outside of school on the LGBTQ plus community. And during, uh, we were studying that and we came here to tell you why we think it's important for projects like this to be done inside of school in addition to the regular curriculum that can help expand skills that you need to learn while in school.
Um, the first skill is you have to be able to research. And we've done a lot of that in school. And we had to research, um, all the different parts of the LGBTQ plus community.
Um, we also had to learn how to collaborate and be able to work cohesively as partners and be able to accept others' ideas and listen to criticism and answer questions about it because not everyone has the same views as we do.
We also had to use our writing skills, because we're writing a persuasive essay, and we're making a slideshow for our classroom. And it, we had to use a bunch of our editing, revising, and writing skills to write the essay.
We also need to use our organization skills, because if we were unorganized, we wouldn't be able to put a presentation together. We all, we needed to organize all of our pieces of paper and prop and work to be able to speak about it. And not just be uneducated on the topic and just spit out random facts.
We're also, we're, we have to use, we have to use a lot of creativity, because we have to alter things that you do on a normal everyday basis in school, like morning meeting, and make the activities pride-related. Also, we're like, we're planning a day in our classroom that will be all about LGBTQ plus and the community, and vice versa, to know about it.
These are, some of these skills are something that you are not only important to learn, but almost they're very important to learn, to be able to work in a workplace and work cohesively with your coworkers. And they're very important life skills to learn, which doing this project had helped us expand those skills to then be able to apply into the work that we're doing at school. Any questions?
What was your favorite part of the project?
My favorite part was the researcher.
Yeah, my favorite part was probably the research part too.
Can you tell me what your, the theme of your persuasive essay was?
It wa- it was more of an informational essay than persuasive writing, but we also had to use our persuasive skills to, to we had to use the persuasive skills to not try and change the minds of people, because you can't do that, but to educate them on it. Any other questions?
Phil. Phil is from Essex Middle School. He teaches seventh and eighth grade. And I actually reached out through Kevin to have Phil come, because I've been in his classroom, and I'm always awed. And last time I spent twenty dollars in his classroom.
So yeah, I'm here to speak about the CTE connection class that the CTE sponsors through a grant. It was started at ADL last year, and then it came to EMS this year. And so it's a forty-five minute block, and it's, there's about ten kids in the class. And our goal is to make, you can switch the slide, sorry. The goal is to make a strong connection with CTE, just so kids know that that is a pathway in high school. It's also to bring math to life, to show them that the math that they're working on in their classroom has a real purpose in the real world, because sometimes that's hard for them to see. A big goal is to make sure they are building their basic skills, but then also working on grade level content and standards. Oftentimes, some kids that are struggling in math tend to never get to the grade level standards. So we need to improve their basic skills and give them experience with the grade level curriculum. Also, it also shows them that there's some flexible pathways as they go into high school. It's not one road, one thing fits everybody. And then help them set some goals for their PLPs. So, I'm gonna just outline like four pretty massive projects we did. The first project we did, I wanted to really grab their attention and make them interested. These kids are not in the class. This is the only picture I had of the honey harvester. But we harvested a whole bunch of honey. And then from the, from that, we started doing some math projects. The first thing that the kids did was we wanted, I wanted to do some basic math activities. So we collected a bunch of data. We weighed every frame of honey that we had before and after we harvested the honey. We were looking to see if there was a proportional relationship between how much honey was in the frame before and after. And we actually found, you know, there was a little bit of a proportional relationship, but overall it was more random. But that was good for the kids to learn. And so these other kids that are harvesting the honey, we harvested about thirty-five gallons of honey. And what they did with the honey is, after we were, we did all the data collection, we decided to take some cookie recipes, take out the white sugar, and we used honey instead as a sweetener. And then we did some taste tests around the school, and we collected a bunch of data, and we found that the honey cookies were a lot better for you, and that most people liked them just as much. But then we did it with maple syrup, and honey got defeated by the syrup. So, but honey, honey stood up against the white sugar. So this whole beginning part of the class was about data collection and getting into proportional relationships. Then we took the wax from the bee frames, and we melted it down, cleaned it up, and we made some organic bee balm, which is this right here. And this was all about ratios and proportions. And we had to, we had a recipe that we had to, we tested, and we had to manipulate and change, so that we had the consistency we wanted. Because what we were finding is when we put the original recipe in our pocket, it would warm up, and it would like turn to like jelly. So then the kid, actually one of the kids said, we need to add more bee wax, and it'll firm it up. So that's what we, we did a lot of tests, and that was the final product there. And it's actually better than Burt's Bees too, I think. Works really well. And then another project we did was this cutting board project. And these are some students building cutting boards. You can jump to the next slide. And the whole purpose of this activity was to get into some geometry. And we started with surface area. And calculating the surface area of all the different boards that they made. And then what we did is we based, we were selling these boards. They got to keep two of them, and then they made one or two to sell to raise money for some other materials for a project. And they based, they had to decide on how to calculate the price of the board, so they created this unit rate right here. And they calculated the surface area, and then they used the proportion to calculate the price of the board. So you can see this board. At first, they said they wanted to charge one dollar per square inch, and we realized quickly the boards were gonna be like two hundred and twenty bucks. So then they had to scale it back. They can't, they ended up with five cents per square inch. And then they had to price out all the boards. They did all the calculations, they self-checked all each other's work, and that was that. It took quite awhile, actually. So, I'm gonna go to the next slide. Another project that we're continuing to work on is the snowboard project. So these snowboards were put out by Burt and Snowboard's last couple years. This is an adult one, and this is a kids'. And so the kids had to figure out if they're, if they're proportional. And so we, I brought them in, and they measured them, and did their diagrams, and they used the proportion to determine that they are proportional, and this one is eighty percent of the original. And so the idea was for them to make an in-between size for them, because they're not quite adults, they're not kids. And then we did, you can go to the next slide. We did some research, some tests, and they decided they liked the larger board. So then we spent quite awhile rebuilding these snowboard presses, that will then help us laminate the boards. And now, at this point in time, all the presses are done, and we're ready to start making them, so that they'll have them by the end of the year. That's a really like ongoing project. So another project we did, I wanted to tell you, in middle school, in sixth grade, the big ideas in mathematics are ratios, rates, and units. That's sixth grade. Seventh grade is proportional relationships. And then in eighth grade, it's functions, like y equals mx plus b. Unless you're like in fifth grade with the kid with the circuits here. Yeah, he's doing linear equations. So we have a sugaring house already at EMS that we built about eight years ago. And so the kids had to take a video of, so this project was already available. And they had to, they set it all up though, the kids in the CTE class. They had to videotape the sap dripping for ten seconds. And then take that and calculate a drip rate per minute, and then calculate all these other unit rates. And figure out how many drips would drip from that tree in one sap run. And then they had to take the rate and turn it into an equation. And what this says is nine x equals y, which that's y equals mx, which is like, you know, really impressive that the student was able to come up with that on her own. And then graph it. So this is one of the first experiences they have with taking that proportion, that rate ratio, turning it into an equation and then graphing. So that's what that looks like. And then the cool thing is, is we have like the sweetest tree in Vermont, right at Essex Middle School. It literally runs between eight and ten percent straight out of the tree every year. And if you're not familiar with sugaring, the average is two percent. So it's five hundred percent sweeter than the average tree. I've been with monitoring this tree with students for about eight years. And this year, when we collect this sap, it was at ten percent. And so they wrote up a little blurb in this publication. It's called the Maple News. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. But it just says that the students at Essex Middle School, I mean, I'm not gonna read that, but it basically just talks about that we have this tree that runs at ten percent. And I've taken a lot of grief about this over the years. No one ever believes me that this tree runs at between eight and ten percent. But it does. We contacted the UVM Proctor Center, and then that's who sent this information onto this publication. So it's really cool for the kids to actually see that this got into this publication and their work was recognized. Sorry, my mouth just went like really dry. Hard time talking right now. I apologize. So.
All that sweetness.
Yeah. Is there one more slide, or is that it? Oh yeah. And then to finish out the year, the kids are gonna build a mini speaker for their phone. They're gonna build the actual structure, and then the electronics too. And then we're gonna organize the student garden. And all of those projects have to do with proportions, rates, ratios, and functions.
Thank you.
Awesome. Nice.
Laura, would you like to introduce the next guest?
Sure, this is Megan Davidson. She's amazing, and I love her.
That's a great introduction.
I appreciate it. I'm gonna grab a chair. I was a little blown away by the presentations that came before me. I wasn't, I didn't know I had to out cute kindergartners. Perfect. Thank you so much. So to introduce myself, my name is Megan Davidson. I have been at Essex High School for four years. I'm a social studies teacher. I teach American government. I teach US history. I also teach Facing History in Ourselves, which is a Holocaust course. And I also teach military history. So. I, and also I'd really like to thank Laura for advocating for me to come here. I'd like to introduce the Flip Classroom, which is just another strategy for secondary educators, and just a way to incorporate technology more into the classroom. So. I first wanna start why I decided to choose the Flip Classroom. As a student, and even today, I'm hearing impaired. So as a student, I oftentimes struggled in a traditional classroom setting. I lip read a lot. And most of the time in a traditional classroom, I heard a lot of lectures with very little visual aids. I was trying to follow along with my notes, but my notes ended up look like, looking like Swiss cheese, a lot of holes, a lot of gaps. If I asked my buddy next to me, I was often reprimanded, because I'm supposed to be listening and following along. And I'm trying, but my notes just, I wasn't on pace with the rest of the class. So in order to compensate for that, I would often read my textbook a couple times, talk to teachers before school, after school, during study hall, and try to help myself and fill in those gaps with the Swiss cheese notes. And so as a teacher, I want to find a strategy that not only worked for my students, like myself, but also benefit the collective whole. So I found the Flip Classroom. And so what the Flip Classroom does is it flips, it reverses the traditional classroom. As you see in this infographic. A traditional classroom in its simplest terms is usually we see the teacher conducting a lecture at the front of the classroom, and the students follow along. As you see, usually the teacher picks the pace and goes with it. Then a student will be sent home with homework activity, like a worksheet, and it usually correlates with the lecture. With the Flip Classroom, the student watches the lecture at home. This could be any, anything from the teacher's own video, which now I'm starting to worry. The fifth graders are great videographers. Laura can contest. I try to do my best with the lectures, but I think I have to go back to fifth grade and learn the green screen. Crash Course, it could be a Crash Course video. Khan Academy is also a great source. Or videos from YouTube. I tend to make my own videos for American government. I use Crash Course in US history. I use a lot of content from YouTube when it comes to the Holocaust survivor testimony. And they come to class watching the lecture at home, and then we do activity that correlates with the lecture. What's great about the Flip Classroom is the change in the teacher position. In the traditional classroom, the teacher's up front, talking with the students, sending the pace. In the Flip Classroom, what I like is you'll see the teacher kind of coaching, mentoring. It's more student-centered. It gives me the time as a teacher to have one and more than, more one-on-one attention. So. I'd like to share this video that kinda talks a little bit more about the Flip Classroom. I also like it, because it has penguins. We could go back.
This is a classroom. The teacher stands at the front, and students watch and listen. You'll recognize this, because it's probably how you were taught and how your parents were taught before you. But there are a lot of problems with this approach to teaching. You see, not all students learn at the same speed. So some get left behind. And while some students learn better by listening, others may learn better by doing. This means the teachers can't always do the best job they can, but there is another way. The flipped classroom addresses these problems and makes learning more personal. First, the teacher makes a video that delivers the content they usually teach in class. Then they share it online with students who can watch it before the next lesson. This leaves the teacher free to spend class time reading activities that help students apply the knowledge. Students can rewind and re-watch a video as many times as they like, and come back to class with questions for the teacher. So keeping up with the class is no longer an issue. Students can access the video at any time using mobile devices, giving them the ability to learn more independently. Instead of sitting and listening, students can spend class time applying knowledge in more practical ways. And teachers are free to spend their time working with students and giving them individual support and attention.
So, does anyone have any questions before I start talking about how I apply the Flip Classroom in my classroom? Yeah.
What do you do with students who don't watch the lecture?
Great question. I'm gonna be honest. We do review the material before the class. So if students weren't able to watch the video before class, they get caught up a little bit with the review of notes. I would say it's the same thing if students had traditional homework. If they didn't do the traditional homework. If they didn't do the traditional homework again, they would kinda also be a little bit behind. But what I also like about if students didn't do their homework, I could catch them up personally with the one-on-one attention. Um.
Question.
Um, have you encountered students that don't have access to the internet to watch the video?
Mm-hmm.
This is a classroom.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Um. That's another question I usually ask my students in the beginning of the school year. Um, I'm gonna be honest, ninety-eight percent of my students usually have access to not only technology and wifi, but most likely a smartphone, especially at the high school. Um, so I haven't come across a problem with technology yet. What's also great about the high school is we have a thirty-minute built-in flex block, which is essentially a study hall where students can meet up with me. Um, I have access to Chromebooks in my classroom. So thirty minutes every day is really helpful for my students. And most of the videos are twelve to fifteen, ten to fifteen minutes long. So it's easy for them to be able to do that in that thirty-minute block. Also, students have access to this beautiful library. They have access to study halls. So even if they couldn't get it done at home, there's still access in other um ways.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. So this is how I apply it into my classroom. Like I said, outside of class, students are going to watch the lecture. I like to use an application called EdPuzzle, which I'm going to dive in a little bit deeper. Uh, EdPuzzle takes YouTube videos and they embed multiple choice questions or short answer questions into those videos. So you'll be watching a YouTube video and it'll stop, it'll pause, and a question will pop up. Students can re-watch and uh, then select their answer. Um, in the beginning of class, like I said, students are able to ask questions they have about the content. There'll be a short little trivia game known as Kahoot. And afterwards, we're going to highlight the most important notes from the lecture and go over the confusion of any questions. And then lastly, we dive into hands-on activity. And this can range from gallery walks, uh, to group work analysis, to primary source analysis. My students are going to work on a CSI investigation on Kennedy's assassination. Uh, today we did an EXCOM simulation of the Cuban Missile Crisis and how portraying myself as JFK tried to figure out how I would solve that Cuban Missile Crisis with my students as my advisors. So like I said. Am I supposed? Yeah. Um, they watched the lecture on EdPuzzle and this is sort of kind of a screenshot of what EdPuzzle looks like. Like I said, it's a YouTube video. Down here you see that there are multiple choice questions. This is a twelve-minute video. Um, and while they're watching this, I like to have them do hands-on notes. I find retention is a lot better when you write them by hand rather than digitally. Um, I give the students the option, of course, but uh, from my own research, I noticed that retention is a little bit better with hands-on writing. Um, what I also really like about EdPuzzle is it gives me data right away. It'll grade itself, especially with multiple choice questions. So before the class even starts, I can look at EdPuzzle and I could see which questions kinda stumped my students, which gives me immediate feedback to re-teach a certain concept before the class even starts. I'm just gonna have you, yeah.
Is that?
So like I said, I could get immediate feedback through EdPuzzle. Um, right here you see an individual assessment and this is kind of a little bit of my full grade book. What I really like about EdPuzzle, it shows me how long students spent on a particular assignment outside of class. One of the important things I knew as a student is I was a three varsity sport girl. And that takes a lot of time. So I wanna make sure that my EdPuzzles are short and sweet and not taking too much time away from family and extracurricular activities. So this particular EdPuzzle, like I said, was a little bit over twelve minutes and they spent fifteen minutes on this. I can also tell when they're doing homework. Some will do it at midnight, I notice with my high schoolers. Some will do it at six oh three AM, whatever works best for them. I can also tell if they re-watch certain segments. Uh, so in this particular case, you see that this student watched the opening twice. And again, kind of the fourth segment twice. I also see that they watched ninety percent of the video. They kinda lagged at the very end. And they also got all twelve questions correct. As for my grade book, you can also see some particular students spend a little bit less time, whereas some students spend a little bit more time. This is um, a month's work of EdPuzzles. So there's been five EdPuzzles in the last month. Um, I can also see whether students don't complete the EdPuzzle. Um, or also when they submit it late. So. In the beginning of class, another way I can quickly assess my students is through Kahoot. So if you don't mind, I would love to play Kahoot with you. I have three questions. Laura really likes Kahoot. So I would really like to play with you if you could click that for me. If you have a mobile device or a computer right in front of you, I'd also love you to join. Um, if we could play as guests. And what I would like you to do is go to uh, kahoot.it. And if you could click the player versus player.
This one?
Yeah. And I'll give you a little bit more. Please go to kahoot.it and please type in your PIN. Six, six, eight, seven, five, six. It'll give you a little bit more concise directions like putting in your name. And you should see your name on the screen once you get to kahoot.it and put in this code. Laura is already there. This is normal routine for her.
It's my second favorite soundtrack.
Now, I was asking Laura, should these be, should these questions be American government-based? Or should they be flipped classroom-based? They are flipped classroom-based. They sign off to fill the American government room with all aesthetic rooms. Told you can't talk politics the first time we meet. Are we all set before we place hit start?
Okay.
All right. Good? Fabulous. Thanks for the thumbs up. All right, so some quiz questions will pop up. What I'd like you to do is select the answer. Instructional strategy where students are introduced to content at home and practice in class. What term matches that definition? Oh. Oh. Good.
It's on camera too.
Nice. Let's see on the leaderboard. If you could click next for me. Grace is in the lead, followed by Laura.
Are they faster?
Because they did it faster.
If you could click next for me. Teachers post short video lectures online for students to view at home prior to the next class. Is this true or false in a flipped classroom?
Yeah, we're not as fast as on our phones and YouTube.
Yeah. Wow. Ah, nice job, class.
Leaderboard.
And the flipped classroom focuses class time on lectures rather than on student understanding. Is this true or false?
Here, we cut it now.
Right, but, and uh, congratulations Laura. At this point in time, what I would probably do is I'd give Laura a Jolly Rancher to start off my class. Not only this, but it, I feel like Kahoot really sets the tone of the classroom. And uh, like I said, even if students didn't do the EdPuzzle, um, I don't shame them. Uh, what I end up doing is they, they do review some of the content right through the Kahoot. Okay? Um, then what we'll do is we'll review important uh, notes in their notes. We'll highlight the important notes as well. Um, I'll try to help them with their study strategies by um, highlighting what they should be focusing on. Um, important vocabulary, important concepts, uh, and such. For the remainder of the class, what I like to do is I really like to have um, hands-on student-centered activities. And I think this is where the students, you'll see higher um, higher order thinking. Uh, they know the content and at this point in time, they can build upon that with analyzing, evaluating. Uh, through either gallery walks. Um, my students kinda create, looked through a gallery walk on the space race the other day. We'll have debates, especially with American government. A lot of my students like to do debates. Or in order to get them all involved, I'll do a four corners activity. Uh, do you agree, disagree, strongly agree, strongly disagree, and they go to different corners of the room to share their opinion. Uh, primary source analysis, especially when it comes to history. A lot of our students I'm noticing uh, are struggling with primary sources 'cause they're written in this foreign language called cursive. And um, so it, it takes a little bit longer uh, to help them dissect primary sources. And in a traditional classroom, I would probably see primary sources more as homework. But really, I feel like primary sources are a little bit harder, so I would like to handle a little bit more in the classroom. Um, more time for small group work like jigsaws and stations. And like I said, today in US history, I had the joy of watching my students kinda debate each other in an EXCOM meeting for the Cuban Missile Crisis. They were fighting over whether, you know, we should attack Cuba for the missiles or whether we should blockade them. And I thought it was kind of adorkable. Is that the correct word? Adorkable? That they were being nerdy about the Cuban Missile Crisis. Um, but very passionate. Um, these are a few things that my students have said about the flipped classroom. Um, they've also mentioned that they don't like homework. I'm gonna be fair and say that I don't think anyone truly loves homework. Um, but I, like I said, I do try to limit it fifteen, twenty minutes at most. So. I think it's also speaks, um, Laura invited me here, so. Feel very overwhelmed that um, students are very receptive to this strategy. Uh, the benefits, in my eyes, self-paced learning. It challenges students to learn how to take charge of their learning. As you saw with the fifth grader, he was really excited to learn uh, what he wanted to learn. And uh, what's nice about the flipped classroom is I could give them uh, a little bit about the basics of the political parties and then they can explore a little bit more in depth uh, during their class time. It also allows them to kinda learn um, mani- uh, time management, which is going to be an important skill in the workplace, in college, and also becoming resourceful learners. Uh, students also receive a more individualized education where actual face-to-face time with the teacher is being used effectively. I feel more involved with my students because of the flipped classroom. We could also dive deeper into the subject. When students have basic knowledge about a certain subject, they could dive deeper into the material. It's also more time, like I said, for higher order thinking. Uh, they're also more reflective communicators. They think more deeply about the content. When I, you know, we're learning about fifties culture. Students wanna learn more about housewives in the fifties. Some people wanna learn more about franchises and business in the fifties. It gives us opportunity to explore our individual interests. And as a teacher, what I like about the flipped classroom, it's easy to reuse my lectures for next year. So it saves me a little bit of time. It's a little bit, a lot, it's a lot of, I shouldn't say a little bit. It's a lot of time beforehand to make videos, um, to come up with questions, to come up with the worksheets. But what I really like is that I can reuse them. And what's also great is my students can reuse them. If they're absent, they're not missing the lecture. If um, they're ELL or hearing impaired, they can pause their teacher, re-watch certain segments that they did not get. Also, if you notice in the video with the penguins, parents or even assistants can watch and help their children as well uh, with that extra help. So it's tru- it's truly transparent for parents. Um, when I was at parent-teacher conferences, a lot of parents were like, "I've heard your voice before." "That's great to meet you." Um, there are some challenges, like I've said. Um, one of the points was technology issues. Um, no access to internet means no homework. Uh, nowadays, there's more technology. Uh, rumor has it, I heard the budget was approved and rumor has it that there might be one-on-one technology with students. Um, and they're going to get their own Chromebooks next year. Um, I also said ninety-eight percent of my students have these fancy smartphones. And they also have the EdPuzzle app, so a lot of my students watch the EdPuzzle on their phone. Another component is the lack of motivation. And students have to be motivated to do homework and be prepared for class. And this is gonna be a life skill that they'll be using outside of school. Uh, when you don't have the basic knowledge, it's really hard to dive deeper into the subject. It's not completely impossible. It's just harder. And uh, motivation is, is truly key. So to conclude, I like to say that the flipped classroom is another great strategy for a teacher's toolbox. It works well for secondary school students who are motivated and responsible learners. Again, you see more one-on-one teaching time, uh, more one, more one-on-one teacher time, where the teacher can interact with the student. It incorporates technology. It's self-paced. It's more student-centered. It's also more time for higher order thinking for 21st century learners. It dives deeper into the content and it promotes time management and responsibility. So at this point in time, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Laura especially, thank you for advocating for me and I appreciate um, the time you took to listen to me today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bringing students, Laura was a little disappointed.
You have a student.
Yes, I have. I have my student. Laura, what are you doing? Any questions? Yes.
To what extent is it being used by other teachers and to what extent do you have opportunity to sort of share your practice?
Yeah. Um, I have had an opportunity to share um, this with other social studies teachers. I know um, my colleague Liz Ritchie and Barb Eisham have used it in their AP Comparative Gov, uh, AP US History and US History. Um, as for time, I would really like to have more time in talking and uh, talking about the flipped classroom and technology more, um, especially maybe on Tuesdays. Yes.
So are there still um, like print materials in their review as part of their homework? Or are you simply replacing reading with watching videos?
Usually, um, I'll be totally honest, I tend to just have the EdPuzzles as homework. Um, there, most of the reading materials is in the classroom. Yes, Grace.
Um, I guess like, do you think this could be applied to like STEM classes too?
Absolutely. Um, in particular, the flipped classroom actually was initially created for a science and a math class. Uh, comic, uh, Khan Academy is very well-known for the science and math in the STEM side of. Comic, Khan Academy is very well-known for the science and math in the STEM side of academics. And I think it would be great for math class, especially like, this is how we do a particular equation, do it step-by-step so students can re-watch it. I've also seen in a science class where they do a lecture on how to do a particular lab, step-by-step. So students watch the directions on how to do that lab. And then when they do go to the lab, if they need a repeat in instructions, they could go back to that video.
Are there any particular types of learners that struggle with this strategy?
I think it's really beneficial, like I said, as a hearing impaired individual, it was really beneficial. I wish I had this in high school. I also noticed that a lot of ELL students do really well with this. It does take them longer. You will see, when I showed the EdPuzzle layout, it does take them longer. But what I also like is, they're not lost, if I was, if I did the traditional classroom, they would be completely lost. Whereas in the flipped classroom, they're not. It does take them a little bit more time. I also see students who aren't motivated to do work outside of the classroom, or, I'm gonna be honest, government is not for everyone. Not everyone likes to listen to government, so. Some students who aren't passionate about government, or aren't passionate about US history, are going to struggle. But I feel like in a traditional classroom, they might also struggle.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for her, for bringing a way of. People to show us different approaches to instruction than what they're used in classrooms.
I reached out to principals, they're the one that did the work getting people. It wasn't Anna Ray though, I do, yes, thank you.
It was, yeah, thank you everybody.
Yes, I'll do it some other time. We'll skip the Children's Hospital one, and I'll share it another time. Yeah, I'll send it in our email. Basically give it to me after.
Okay, so let's move along. Thanks a little bit. Next up is Student Voice, Subtle Grace, Laura.
All right. And then we'll just have you guys grab one and then pass it around the table.
Yeah, sure, um, so like in the fall, we connected with people, teachers and people who worked at I-Lab at Wenueski. We thought that was really cool, and then I guess kind of like from there, we thought, well, maybe what more can we do with other school districts? And I remember like a few years ago, we had someone representing Student Gov. at this like meeting with other people from other Chinatown County schools. And so I kind of wanted to maybe kind of like bring that back. But basically, I reached out to people on the Burlington, South Burlington School Board, like other high schoolers, and we're setting up times to meet with them during break hopefully, to kind of just talk about like their experiences and kind of see what, what they've done with their school district and what kind of issues they've been tackling. And I think that there's a lot that we can learn from them, so.
What do you do next, Ben?
Uh, student rep, so.
Yeah, sure. So we met with Mr. Riordan, Martha, and Liz about our next year's selection process. Because Grace will be gone sadly. And then we'll have a new junior rep. And we made a few changes to some of the questions on the application sheet. And then we're gonna meet again on Thursday to kind of solidify plans for that. And we, we will update you when we have the finalized one that's gonna be sent out to students, and then we'll have interviews after break.
Yeah, and adding on to that, we're also gonna try to have like a flex block information session for the current sophomores that are interested in this, so they can kind of ask us questions, get to know more about this position besides what's on the paper. Yeah, and then we're also gonna try to visit Fleming sometime after break, to kind of just talk to the kids there about like what we do, and then get them interested in this whole process. Yeah, and then, anything about that that you want to add on to?
Um, yeah, well, one of the things, so we talked with middle schools a lot about, you know, having student voice, and you know, what do you think we can improve about our schools? And I think focusing on some of the younger kids, a lot of it, instead of, you know, their feedback. You, I mean, we're always open to that, but a lot, we're thinking that the meetings that we have with them are gonna be more focused on how they can be involved in their communities, just as, as kids, students, members of, of their community, and maybe they can be future student reps.
Yeah. Um, and kind of given like what we saw today with like their presentation about like plastic bags, I think they'd be pretty interested in seeing like what we do on the board.
Oh, we should do that in every, like all ten schools, by the way, we should have like plastic bag thing.
Yeah, we should, we have something for that. Um, yeah, and then we just have like a request, because we met with Liz and Kim yesterday, and we just had a request to maybe see more like data from like middle and high school like test results, because I know we saw some from third and fourth grade, and I know like while that's like been our focus this year, I think it's like maybe worth also looking at some of the other data. Just to like, not like, just to like not neglect it, and kind of just see like what's been going on with that. So is that possible with that?
It is, we have SBAK data. It's hard for us right now to have other kinds of data this year from high school, but we do have SBAK data that we could. The, we usually show that throughout the year and, and come back with it, but it hasn't been the Agency of Education, the way they collected it this year was different than in the past, and they haven't. The agency has had troubles collecting the data. So I think it should be ready for us now, but they can disaggregate it into females, males, free and reduced lunch and all of that. We haven't had that yet this year, so as soon as we get that data, we will bring it.
Okay.
Questions for Grace and Laura? Okay, thank you both.
Thanks, you guys.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we'll turn to the superintendent's report.
So I'm just going to highlight some things, and then if you have any questions. The, I shared with you the rationale for my decision to create the Director of Social Emotional Learning and Wellness in one position, and then take the other co-director of Student Supports and create the Director of Equity and Diversity, Diversity and Inclusion. And I did that around our vision and our work with social and emotional learning and looking at the district management group. We knew that we needed to do some more work with that. And that teachers being interviewed, shared their frustration on how to, what are the strategies to use with students? And so knowing the work that we have to do, I felt it was really important that we assigned somebody at the district office to do that work. And the same thing with equity. We know that we have work to do after reading building equity, and with all of you, we know that there's things we need to do. And as our population becomes more diverse, and the conversations that we need to have throughout our schools, that there should be somebody that's overseeing that work. It would just get put on top of somebody else's job and not having a person responsible, I think that it would fall behind. So the things that I were looking into, Erin has already jumped in, and she, we're looking at courageous conversations to bring to us. It is, they are coming to Vermont to do some workshops next year, which we've talked about. Do we do that with a leadership team and bring some guidance counselors in? And then if that's the way, then how do we have everybody at EWSD trained? So she's searching that, and that's the kind of things that she will be doing. I talked to her the other day, she will be in charge of doing the equity audit for students and staff, so that'll be done this spring. She's very excited, even though she doesn't officially take her role until July. Do you have any questions about their positions? I laid out kind of new and old responsibilities in the report, yep.
I was wondering if it was something that I've mentioned before, certainly, I think you mentioned that you and Erin were addressing it. But would this also include potentially greater diversity in staff hiring?
Yes, so we already, she has reached out to, oh, I can't think of his name still. I was trying to think of the name with Kim the other night, Paul? From Voices, yes.
QR Strategies.
Yes, so through UVM, she has reached out to him to talk about hiring more, a more diverse population, and where can we turn? So with our HR department, so we do, we are planning on that meeting. I don't know, I knew he was really busy, I don't know if that's gonna happen until summer. I just received a magazine that was all about English language learners, one of our professional development magazines. I had it about two minutes on my table when Amy took it, but there's a whole, there's an article on hiring diverse teachers. So that's another resource that we can use. But yes, it is definitely on our list to do. That actually is what pushed Erin into wanting to do this more, because she keeps, she kept saying it, and was like, all right, well, let's do it.
Great.
Yeah.
Bren.
So I don't want to get caught up in semantics, and I, I definitely appreciate the idea of trying to elevate our district vision for these issues. I guess one of the concerns I have is, does this mean that we're not focused on special education or the needs of special education students?
No, not at all, they will continue, it's adding, it is adding more to their positions for sure. And this year, we will watch that closely. That is their primary responsibility still, and they're taking on this other piece. So when the two of them, they did a lot together this year to try to align things across the district, which made sense for a couple of years. So now, the way that we've divvied up the responsibilities, they can be more solo on some of those. I meet with them once a week, so we'll have that overlap too, and then they meet also another time. But, so, no, it won't, that's really important that we keep it actually in their job, in their contracts. It's in parentheses of the Directors of Student Support still. And so they will still continue their relationships with the schools that they have had, and that, that's really important. And I think that this year, we really need to look at, which made me think before, we had talked about, is it, is there a need to have some assistant directors? When I look at Williston and the money that they spend per special ed student is less than we do, and it makes, it's made me curious like why? And they do have extra help at each of the schools, so I wonder about that. I wonder about, is it an assistant director that could take over more of that, and then they oversee? So that person could be more of the LEA going to a lot of the IEP meetings? They are also both trying to work with principals to make them a little more independent in the LEAs at the IEP, instead of having two administrators at the meeting, and pick up more of the tricky ones. But, good question, because that's on my mind, as I give them more work to do.
Quick acronym clarification?
Yeah.
What is LEA in this context?
It's the local education.
Agency?
Agency.
And that can be an individual person?
Yes, so they are both that for our district. You have, you have an, a local education agency at each district. So at an SU level, there are, there could be many, because each district. So in our district, we have two. We can also have a principal stand in as an LEA representative in IEP meeting. I think one of the things too, that I appreciate about this too, is that Erin will be taking on the oversight of the pre-K. To have one, they've really collaborated and aligned our pre-Ks, and as she presented to you the work that they, that they did together, that she will continue to over, or she'll take that on and oversee that, so that's.
And in all her free time, she's also gonna be back working with Voices for Education moving forward, Ben. And Erin and I met last week, and just to say, she's really excited about this new job, and, and it's very aligned with what she's passionate about in addition to all, all the other things she's doing. But just, thank you Erin, for coming back to us.
She, when we talked about the equity audit, she said, "Oh, I'm gonna Skype with the authors," I was like, "Okay." To make sure she does it right. Yeah, she's pretty excited. And in my report, I completed my sixty hours of my national. Principal supervision academy, I was very excited. I did not realize it was sixty hours, which means that I guess it was really good. I think one of the biggest things that I learned and appreciated was the way they talked about closing the achievement gap, and I always had L's picture in my head, like, yep. And then also closing the opportunity gap, which is really about social and emotional learning, and I found that really interesting. And I feel like with the work that we're doing, the PLC work that we're doing, the work that I'm working with principals around some cycles of inquiry and really working and focusing in on instructional leadership, that will be closing the achievement gap, and then the opportunity gap with our SEL coaches and Dylan's work. So I feel like we are on the right path, so that's always good to hear. It reaffirmed a lot of what I knew and sparked another passion to start really get working with principals. The district leadership team, so it's Brian, myself, Deb, Amy, Erin, and Dylan are attending a conference put on by the same people at the end of May. It's the Center for Ed Leadership, and it focuses on how district office administrators can support instructional leaders. So we're pretty excited, it's a two-day workshop that I'm going to, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Are you gonna talk about the, yes?
The IFR.
Do you have something?
It was on, it was on that, I just was wondering, and I apologize if I should notice, but where we are in principal evaluation.
Yes, so, I know, I was going to put that in there with that report. So we have stand, we have chosen the standards, and the standards came from the learning that I did here, and some of the work that I did. Now, we are working with, on a process for how that's done. So is it goal writing, it comes with a rubric, it's vetted. And now we'll basically work on a process and what that will look like. Right now, they write goals, and then they, I check in with their goals and they achieve their goals. But this is a little more structured to it. And then in May, we'll begin with the teacher one, and I will, in my next report, put out, I have it, I have it done, I didn't include it in this one, but the process for the teacher one, which should match and align with the principal ones. That's why I wanted to get the principal one done first. So by August, both will be done and ready to go as a pilot, yeah.
Next year, that'll be.
Yep.
Thank you.
With teacher voice at the table, which I think is important. And then the IFR, the Integrated Field Review, was done by the Agency of Education. We had many people at our district on February seventh, and they go through five areas. One was academic proficiency, personalization, high-quality staffing, safe, healthy schools, and financial efficiencies. I know about the process, I was on both ends, so I went to Burlington and I was on a team. And I think that's really helpful for me, and that's why I did it, so I would understand when I get the feedback, how it was all put together. I was actually with Bob Travers on that visit, we talked about it today. So we have not, as a leadership team, the only thing that we did was we got the draft and gave feedback, and then sent it back to the agency. So we just received it back, Amy and I haven't really even talked about it yet, but I shared it with you, and it's, now it's ready to go, and we can make some goals around our recommendations. We were happy and pleased with it. When I was in Burlington, the person that I was sitting next to happened to be the one that wrote our, put all our data in and wrote the report. And he talked about how often, that when the team gets together at the end of the day, they actually bring all their data, all their evidence, and then the report is created. He said how often through that, that it was mentioned how much we've done in, in the time that we've been in the district. And people were like, they just couldn't believe how much we've done and how much we're already aligned. The, the biggest thing that he found was that teachers, everybody he talked to, knew and understood the continuous improvement plan. And he was just like, that doesn't, that really doesn't happen. And I haven't found that in another system either, so I don't, you just have amazing principals that have shared it, and they're dedicated to the work, so. Yes.
Um, regarding the IFR, I was, I read.
Um, regarding the IFR, I was, I read the whole thing, and I was a little bit disappointed, first of all, they got our name wrong. The Essex Westford Supervisory District.
Yes.
But also that it mostly seemed like, it was like, yeah, you're doing pretty good, which, there were three areas, I think, where they identified, like, you could do better if you did X, but it was very brief, and there wasn't, like, it says here the goals, one of them is identify promising practices to lift up to share with other school systems. It would have been nice to know, like, what are the top three things that they think that we're particularly outstanding in, if those exist? So, I wish that we're a little more specific.
I agree, and we talked about that as a leadership team, it was kinda like, oh, but, I learned, I know how much data they collect, cause I was on that other end for Burlington, and I wanna see all our data, but it's just not possible. I requested it, but I don't get it.
The process itself is.
So they don't, they won't give it to you.
The process and its intention has changed quite a bit over about a year and a half's time. I mean, it was originally conceived as sort of a high-stakes EQS kind of thing, and I think with some of the transition at AOE and some of the changes and so forth, it has changed pretty fundamentally. So, I think some of our expectations were, were built on what we might see in those first few iterations, but now, it's, you know, some of, some of the comments has been the value of what you see. I mean, some of the SEL concepts that came to the board during budget were a result of Dylan's work in going and going to another district. So, that cross-pollination is probably one of the best things that's happened, and probably the process would be wise to try to bring those up and give some highlights to them.
Other questions or comments for Ben? Thank you.
Well, one comment is, I, it's nice to see that this group that was evaluating, you know, a, a, that are, we need a master plan for stewardship, and, and yet, we got the voters to approve that, that very effort, so it's, it's nice to see that, you know, everybody's thinking the same. The other question I had from reading it is, you talked about vertical and horizontal togetherness. And, so my question is, is that, yes, we've got, you know, horizontal curriculum going on, and I'm assuming that should be attributed to the every Tuesday meetings.
Yes.
So are the every Tuesday meetings now gonna deal with the vertical piece?
So, great question, cause we've been working through that also, and thinking what that looks like. So Amy's intent is, over the summer, to bring, like, one or, one or two people from each grade level to do that work, cause it's very hard to put all of them in one room, right? So we could get a group of people to do that, the same that they did when they wrote the proficiencies. Same kind of work with smaller groups, but yes, that is definitely the next step. And then it also has to go back next year, and we need to do more around the curriculum in grade level teams, and then it will go back to the vertical, so, yes. And that's probably what teachers reported on, we haven't, they haven't been in vertical teams yet, yeah.
Anything else at home?
It was encouraging to hear the comment about the students that do not have internet connection at home. Cause I think that's an important point, that the systems that are being used are so dependent on that connection. And the very attractive price that Comcast requests for nine dollars a month. I mean, when you, we don't have, we probably don't have an inventory of the numbers of students that are unable to connect, and yet, it's a critical piece of their learning, so, something to think about.
Anything else? I would just say ahead, I, my takeaway was that the recommendations were all things that I was aware that we needed to work on. So that was validating, yeah. Okay, let's move on to second reading of policy before drug and alcohol testing for transportation employees. So we made some suggestions last time, those were incorporated. Does anyone see a further need for change, or are we ready to act on this policy?
I was wondering if there was any response about the comments that I made on the procedures, where it was like unclear what's illegal, prohibited, and all that stuff.
Jamie's, Jamie can answer those now, or I'm with?
So I think, if you could just say you're working on it, and at some point, you'll not for us to act on, but you'll let us see the revised draft, I think, is that where we're at, that it's still being revised?
Yeah, we just, the other work products took the priority and come back to that.
All five thousand pages.
Okay, anything else on the policy? Are we ready for motion to approve a second reading policy before drug and alcohol testing, transportation employees for transportation employees?
Quick question.
Okay.
Is there, is there something in the personnel policy or the personnel handbook that explains what happens if there is a positive result?
Jamie, did you hear that question? Yeah, there isn't anything explicit that outlines the, that outlines the process. It says, most of the statements are, can be subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination. There is a very clearly defined set of procedures in the FMCSA for a positive of going to see a substance abuse professional. They provide a plan.
Okay, that's what.
And that has to be followed, and yeah, and that's, that's all written in the federal regulations, and we have language in our procedures that says we would follow that, and employee would have an opportunity to follow that.
Okay.
Thank you. Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, I'm ready. Is, is there a further discussion? If not, I'll let some favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, I don't think.
Yeah, but that's okay, I, I'm using my notes, so you can use it.
That's fine. Alright, so let's move on to student transportation plan. So, we've gotten lots of information. Probably sick of getting emails from me, I felt like I really needed to give you a heads up that all the information was there. And I appreciate all the work that Jamie and Brian and I assume others have done to outline possibilities to be considered and to make a recommendation. So, I assume you have a plan for how you might approach this?
Yep, my plan is to have Jamie.
That's a good plan.
Yeah, so, is there a clicker?
I'm gonna have to click, give me.
Use the clicker.
So, we wanna go, I'd, I'd like to go through a few things with you all, and get some direction hopefully by the end of this from you all. And I also have a piece of good news to share with you all.
If we can use some good transportation news.
So, you know, we wanna go through kinda three things with this, the, the timeline and the milestones, so that kind of is the roadmap of what are our options going forward. We wanna go through in brief the procedures and operating practices that we put together, and, and some of the pieces that have informed those documents. And then, we wanna give you a little snapshot of kind of what's, where we're at right now, like, in the here and the now, so. So here we go, so the first piece is, you know, looking at a roadmap, where do we go from here? So, the expected level of service, we have four assumptions essentially. One, that we're going to, you know, provide transportation to our students on public roads, youngest and most vulnerable, for folks who don't live within our designated walking zones. Two, that we're gonna continue to provide special education transportation for kids who have it in their IEP. And that, we want to continue to furnish transportation for tuition students, and that we are also committed to providing a full slate of extracurricular transportation for students. So the assumption, we looked at this and said, well, this is two years now that we've gone through this process of thinking that we're gonna get more drivers to serve the village, and it hasn't happened. There's just not the, there's not the employee pool there, there's not the amount of people who want to do this job. So, with that base assumption, we started to look at, okay, if we're not gonna have any more drivers, what are our options given what we have now in our system, the resources in our system, and how could we potentially apply those based on our principles to provide some level of service and create some sort of equity? So, given that, what we are hoping from you all is that we will get direction from the board, because you and, you shape and influence what we are to do in three key ways. One, on policy, in creation and monitoring of policy. Two, in contract solicitation and approval, because many of these decisions going forward in this roadmap are based in which contracts we pursue, and which contracts, and how we do that. And then also just budget development and oversight. So, the three paths we have racked our brains about. Path A would in, would essentially take resources from other places, from older students, in order to create a transportation service for the village that is equal, I would say, to what we have in, for our K eight students in other regions. It would eliminate, it would eliminate, eliminate transportation for our resident high school students, tech ed, Georgia, and it would shift some transportation from Westford in order to do that. Path B, which would be our recommendation, is to shift some of those resources, and change the way that we provide transportation for high school students within the town, to, so to still be able to provide that, but just provide it in a different way by putting those students on the same routes with our K eight students, and then facilitate them getting to school with a transfer bus. So we'd still be providing those students access to transportation, but we would then be able to take essentially those vehicles that we use now for dedicated high school routes, and create a transit loop system for the village, which would have, for some students, a little more of a, of a walk zone. There would be a, a transfer involved from Summit to, to get from Summit to Hiawatha, but it would create a transportation option for the village without totally bleeding transportation from our, from others, from high school students in other areas. Path C would be another possibility, which would be to leave the large part of the system as is, take one route by reducing transportation up in Westford, one of our K eight routes, reducing one of those. Take that resource, shift a few things around, and then use that vehicle to, and driver to provide service for the youngest students in the village who are the most vulnerable, meaning they are furthest from the school and have the greatest amount of trans, of hazards in their way. So it'd be one vehicle that provides for Hiawatha. That's the nutshell, you'll see a few more images of, of how that shakes out in a few more ways, and I think you've received, you've received all this too. So, policy implications. Path A, it would meet the intent to serve the youngest students, it does create a certain vulnerability for our high schools, for high school students who would be deprived a bit of transportation. Path B, it's our belief that path B provides the, to the fullest extent possible meets, meets the vision and the, and the policy that we've set forth. Path C wouldn't really fully meet the direction or the intent. Contract action. Path A would require us to terminate two active contracts, path B would require us to just change two contracts by shifting what types of routes drivers are performing essentially. Path C would require us to change one existing contract, so that's where, you know, that's another piece where board authority is, is necessary. Budget impact. So, the, the big impact in path A is we reduce tuition students. We, we essentially take away transportation options for tuition students, which has, has a large tuition impact for us, and a large revenue impact. It also, there's a, there's also, Brian actually used the analogy the other day of, we're in the midst of March Madness, and he said, you know, it's the five-point or the six-point swing, where you miss a shot one way and the other team comes back the other way and scores, and there's the six-point swing, so those of you who are sports fans, but, there's an analogy there where Grand Isle School is closing, it's a middle school level. We actually have the opportunity, if we retain transportation to the islands, to actually gain more middle school tuition students, and then have those students become high school students, so it could actually add to revenue if we can retain that transportation. Path B wouldn't threaten our projected revenue, and again, it would, it could potentially add, you know, that, that revenue from Grand Isle School. Path C wouldn't threaten it. So, there's that. This kind of lays out in probably the most visual way exactly what changes, you know, who gets what and who doesn't get it, essentially. All of them provide for K eight town, that's part of our, you know, youngest. K eight village, you can see that, you know, path C only provides it for a small sliver. The biggest differences would be for nine through twelve and CTP are the town. And Westford, where path A does not provide that, that's, you know, where we talk about taking transportation away from essentially all of our high school students. So those are the biggest differences there. So, okay, so what's, what is it with this, this option B, right? What are we gonna do that's the magic sauce that's gonna, that would make this work? That's a picture of our K twelve routes. Essentially, what we do now is we cover all of these roads twice. We put a K eight route out there, and then we drive out there with a nine-twelve route, and sometimes those buses are two or three minutes apart. So we would essentially just travel these roads once, based on our ridership surveys, we, we know that we have the capacity, given our current ridership levels, to do this. We would collect all the students and bring them into Essex Elementary School, and then we would have two vehicles to take students from Essex Elementary in the morning and go over to high school. They'd leave Essex Elementary at about seven forty, which is, which is your, you know, we're dropping off right before their, their start time, so it works for Essex Elementary, fifteen minutes or so to get across town, and they get here at seven fifty-five to walk in the door and start their day. And essentially, the reverse on the, the other side of it. So, this would utilize, you know, we'd shift around some of our resources to be able to do this. It's also important to note with this, that up until this year, we actually did employ transfers for students. So this would be, in a lot of ways, just kinda going back to what we, what the town has done, a practice that the town has always done. So I, I don't think it would be.
In this case, we'd be doing it on school property, where in the past, we've done it at churches, parking lots, gas stations, and so.
Back alleys, you know.
I just wanna be sure you're finished, and then.
We, when, would, do you want me to finish with this and then entertain questions at the very end?
I think so.
Okay, okay, okay. So what is, so that's, you know, that's what the, the nine, or the, the K twelve combined routes would look like to get those three high school buses. So then, how do we employ those buses? So then how do we employ those buses that are currently dedicated high school routes? How do we redeploy those in the village? Well, this is essentially what we're talking about doing. We'd create three zones, a northeast, a northwest, and a south zone. And we would have buses that run fifteen or twenty minute loops for each grade level. So there would be a K three loop, there would be a four five loop, and then there would be a middle school loop. The K three loop would, the route that performs this route for K three would actually pick up four fives in the first loop. And then instead of doing a four five loop, it would collect the other students at Summit and transfer them over to Hiawatha. Given the time constraints, that's the only way we can do this. We can't have the K three buses stop at both schools. So those Hiawatha students would, would have a transfer, which would be more time on the bus for them. Which is where you see this maximum ride time of thirty-eight minutes. That's a student who's getting on at the very beginning riding. Some of the metrics there. There are some outliers, you know, there's a student who is going to walk point eight one miles to school, or to the bus stop. And that's probably a student who lives here, and is going to walk to this stop. And that's, you know, one or two. So there, there are some sacrifices, some trade-offs with this system. Just to get the time efficiency that you need, you have to create a little bit bigger of a walking to stop some. But overall, you look at the averages, and the averages are better than what students in the town are seeing now. And certainly better, you know, certainly competitive with what students in Westford are better than what Westford is. So this, these would be the four fives. Again, it's pretty much the same geography. There's your averages, you know, per times and, you know, an average of quarter of a mile walk to stop, a max of six and a mile. Maximum twenty-two minutes. The wait time is, you know, that is something that we, that would be a compromise with this. Because you're going to have students who are on this first trip here. That would then need to get used during what's normally the four to five loop time, the four or five grade loop time. Since that bus has to pick up the kids early and drop them off, they're going to get to Clemmie early, these students who go up here. So that's where you see that, that number. There's approximately two hundred and forty students who go to ADL. Those are the, the numbers for them. You know, again, this is, this is back closer to what we see with the grades, one K to three. There's actually, you know, the longest walk is, is shorter. And that's probably because, you know, the student, instead of living, but you've eliminated that, and it's probably a student, you know, walking from out here. So, based on all of that, we need- The will of the board, essentially, to give me some direction. Which, which way do you want me to go so that I can start working to execute contracts that, that bring us forward? Given the timeline that we're at right now, in order for me to start walking in contractors into this, I need a, we need a decision. To be able to start on forward and be able to have second place for the next year.
Okay, so let's, before we get to that decision, let's hear questions people have about the material. So, Keely, yeah, I think Todd, I think Grace.
I think Todd's hand was up before mine.
Todd. I put smoking on print this one.
Sorry, I, I don't like to be under pressure to digest all this information and give you a recommendation this evening. I think I, I would like to see a hybrid of A and B, where we do what would happen if we did K through twelve in the town. And limited service to K through five in the village and a more traditional bus route. I'd like to see what that would do. As I dove into the building equity book and started thinking about what we're proposing, I, I, I'm very concerned about the disparity between the services, especially with the loop for the village. I don't think from a user's standpoint, it's very attractive. It will be used. I think we're trying to maintain a legacy system. And shoehorn in some other users as opposed to taking a more holistic look and say, who should we serve? And how do we best serve them? So I, I, I'm, I'm troubled by the loop system in the village. I don't think it's going to be used. When I look at the operations procedures, it says, you know, K and first grade students are supposed to be brought to the stop by their parent and picked up at the stop with their parent. I don't, I think that's going to be difficult for a village parent, especially if they're a single parent and they've got an infant at home and they got to get, they got to walk point six miles to have their kid picked up from the bus. I, I just don't think it's very equitable. I think we can do better, and I would like to see if there's a way to do a more traditional service. I don't think ADL students need the bus. It's probably the, they probably have the highest amount of walkers in the whole district. They're old enough, they do it, they have a lot of after-school activities. I don't think it would be used. I think, I, I would much rather see to stick K, K five. Have more traditional service, and if that's possible to do with K through twelve riders in the town, from a more traditional, I would like to know if that's possible.
The, the challenge with providing K five. And there aren't any additional resources to deploy by, by removing service from ADL because of the way that our start and stop times are aligned. The buses that are dropping off for K five are the same buses that then get used later for, for six through eight. So, I don't, I mean, I've, I've gone through probably six or seven different permutations of building out different systems to try and, and make that possible. And I just don't know that we have the, the drivers to do something like that. This is, you know, this is given, given what we have for drivers. This is, I think, the, the best, the best thing that, that we can put out there.
Keely.
Um, so, on, on the one end, I'd like to say thank you for giving us visuals of what is meant by K through eight loop. Because I had this vision that it would be something like the number four bus, where like, oh, you got to the stop, and if there isn't room for you, you can wait half an hour and then get on it again. Which, it's clear that this is more of like a bus route. Where you'll be assigned to a particular stop at a particular time. So that's useful information. On the other hand, I'm kind of disappointed to see path C even proposed to us, since I think the idea of retaining high school transportation in the town exactly as it is and only offering one bus to Hiawatha is something that we were comfortable seeing as a step in the process of getting to full transportation, but not as a declared goal. So, I would like to propose that we take path C entirely off the table. It's not worth talking about.
Yeah.
Then, to kind of chime in with some of what Todd was saying, I think there's some great ideas in A and in B. And I don't understand why the great ideas aren't in both of them. Like, expanding the number of grades that can ride on a bus clearly offers more flexibility than saying we strictly are just doing K through five, middle school, and high school. And it might be that because of the start and stop times, that doesn't win us very much right now. But as we're thinking about moving to high school, it might win us more in the future. Maybe moving Fleming and Summit to be at the same time, like they used to be, might make sense. And it's only fifteen minutes, so we could handle that change. Like, there might be ways in which combining some of these grades gets us more wins. Also, the shuttle between schools, which I know Todd brought up many months ago, is something that I think is definitely worth considering in either plan. So I guess my concern with path B is that it seems to make very full use of the number of drivers we currently have. But history would suggest that the number of drivers we have on the first day of school may actually be considerably lower than the number of drivers we currently have. And I think that promising people this full of transportation for high school is not guaranteed to actually happen. It would be wiser to say, we're transporting K through eight, and if it turns out that we have magical drivers in August, then we'll also tell you that we're transporting the high school. But, um, to me, path B is over-optimistic. So, that's my take on all of this at length.
Grace.
Oh, um, yeah, I guess I was just, just going to ask him what the, the con of like path B is, because it seems like it's the one that you guys recommended, but I think, so, just to clarify, it's just that we would need all of those drivers that we have right now. But like-
That, that's the, that's the concern that Keely has expressed. Yes, this is built on having the number of drivers we have right now. But no, hi.
The, the con, if there is a, I mean, there are, there are going to be trade-offs with it. I think one of the biggest impacts for students will be that students, I don't know how familiar you are currently with how the high school buses work, but there's a, there's a route that goes first in the morning and then last in the afternoon. And then there's a route that goes, you know, closer to the bell times for each of those. The students who are at the front and end of that will actually probably see a little bit of an improvement in their pickup time. So in the mornings, they'll get on the bus a little later. In the afternoon, they'll get off the bus a little earlier. The students who are on the middle trips, so the ones that are closest to the bell times, will see their trip times move out and get a little longer. And everybody's going to have to make a transfer. So everybody's going to have to get up, for high school, is going to have to get off a bus, get on a different bus to get to school. So, there will be impacts. It, overall, if you ran average numbers, would probably be a wash for the average trip time, but people will be affected.
Brent, and then Kim.
So just to walk, um, Keely's scenario in the reverse.
Mm-hmm.
We're developing a contingency plan because we don't have enough drivers. Based on our history, we'll probably have fewer drivers, because retention has been an issue as we go forward. But what if we actually had enough drivers and more drivers? What is the plan? So this is, this is a contingency plan. What is the, what would the plan be to get to full transportation if you ended up having more or as many drivers as you needed to fully serve the district?
Well, we did, and, and to be clear, we actually did gain three drivers from, from the previous school year to this school year. So we added, you know, we did add a certain number of drivers. We went into this plan saying, if we just retain this number of drivers. We have models that, that have been built for a fuller implementation that would have, you know, if we had an additional six drivers beyond what we have now, so beyond path B, if we got six more drivers, there's a plan for that. It would involve, it would involve changing the system and informing parents and informing drivers. You know, if we were going to shift to that mid-year, and that could be a potential adjustment for everybody. But that's, you know, that is a plan that, that is built, that is more of a traditional, you know, a traditional system that's, that's equal as far as walk to stop distance and ride times, and there aren't any transfers in it.
Kim?
The first thing I thought with the transfer was the traffic at E E S. So I, how has that been considered and how does that work itself out?
Yeah, so, I've been thinking a lot about that. And I've, I've been, you know, I've, I've been at our schools and seen these traffic issues, and I think the way to work it out is actually the transfer's going to help us a little bit, because we're going to have to wiggle some of the existing routes earlier in the morning by five or ten minutes, and later in the afternoon by five or ten minutes. And what you do there is you miss that magic, it's, I mean, it, it's profound. It's a magic, like, eight-minute window when it's bedlam. And then all the parents have picked up their kids and they're gone. So, we're, we're just kind of planning to be at the school before that bedlam happens in the morning. And then to be there after that bedlam has taken place in the afternoon.
And so my second question is regarding coverage at extended drop times, and that is potentially a contract issue where paris coverage or additional hours, but it would, I know that there are some hard bets on when kids are allowed into the buildings. And so, I, I'm sure you guys know that too and are mindful of it, but I am expecting that any version of this plan that increases the drop time or extends the time that kids are waiting to get on the bus is being thought of and managed for coverage.
The budget that was, the budget that was passed has a substantial increase for after and before school supervision.
And that, I think, is probably given the shorter Tuesdays within our para-capacity of, I think-
We're also working holistically with special ed and the principals to start to redefine job descriptions. So new people coming in will have jobs that specify that they're required to do bus aid duty in the morning or in the afternoon. And their job descriptions will require them also that they'll be tapped for other responsibilities that do with supervision. So, so that it's just, it's just built in and its eyes wide open.
Perfect, thank you. And I'm appreciative of the thoughtful layout of the information to really see. I think I just need to say that as far as I know, one, there is no high school in Chittenden County that isn't providing transportation. And there is no high school that I'm aware of in the state not providing high school transportation. So we would definitely be an outlier as the second largest high school in the state to not be providing transportation. I think it would be detrimental to be losing those potential tuition dollars. In addition to potentially very challenging for ninth and tenth graders in the outlying areas, whether it be Westford or Essex. And we certainly could not by our policy be providing transportation to tuition students in the high school and not to our students in the high school as I read it. No matter what the dollar trade-off is.
So, before we start the second round, I have a couple names and then I'll go to you. Jamie, have the, do the contractors know what we're considering?
Not in great detail, but with some of the shifts that we have proposed, the, I have been in, I have discussed it with them in a very relaxed manner, so I don't think it would come as a surprise to them to say.
That's what I'm asking. I'm, I'm just worried about somebody seeing the video and saying, nobody told me this might be happening. Okay. And I, I want to have a conversation about communication. But I think that can happen once we've made this decision. Diane?
I have a question. For these proposed routes. Okay, I, I noticed that, you know, the high school students are not in plan B for the village. Is it possible for a high school student that, that wants to hop the bus? That's in nine twelve and catch, let's say, to, uh, Summit Fleming, just then at least closer to the Five Corners and the high school? Could they, could they do that to cut some of the time off of their walk? I notice how long, you know, some of these routes are. I, I'm thinking of the, the option of, of route two and route, route four on GMT. Um, you know, if, if that's not an option, at least maybe it's cutting some of the foot, foot time off might be adequate. Can students hop on the bus with our K eights?
My first concern, before saying definitively yes, my first concern would be capacity. And I think that we would have a better idea once we were able to conduct our September ridership survey. To see if we have room on those, on those buses to open it up. And I think that, you know, given the timing of that with the way the weather would play out, it, we'd have some time before, you know, before it becomes really, before the weather gets bad and, and where students would probably want to be on that bus rather than, than walking and biking. So it's certainly something we could look at, something that we would make sure that we examined, and if we could open those routes up, we would.
Do you want to talk about GMT?
Yeah, actually, that was my piece of good news. Um, I, I got an update, a live tweet, if you will, from the Green Mountain Transit Board meeting that happened tonight in uh down in the Mupelia area. So, their board did vote to approve uh continuing the number four. The service is going to be from six thirty in the morning till eight thirty in the morning, so that'll cover our, our two school. The afternoon service that they approved was three o'clock to six o'clock. So, that covers us on every day but Tuesday. I do have an indication that they would be willing to have further discussion about adding some service for like a two o'clock Tuesday run. Um, so that's something that we'll continue to engage them with, so. The response, and Diane, thank you so much for going to that meeting. Thank you to the community in general who went to that meeting. We had an overwhelming amount of support there. We had six times the amount of people who went to that meeting that went to any of their other public meetings to that point. Uh, Burlington ended up having about as many people, but I think it just speaks to the, the community support and, um, you know, and how much that service means to our community, so. That's a win.
We can use Tom, no, um, I'm, I'm doing Tom, 'cause he's been waiting.
A couple things, I just wanted to understand, when I had talked with Brian a few months ago, it was my understanding that in the budget is enough money for full service for the entire district. Is that correct? So, if at a point we do have enough to provide that, will we provide that, or are we just gonna stick with this and say it's good enough?
I, I would, if we can gain more drivers and ramp up service and improve service, we're gonna improve service. Absolutely. There's, there's enough money budgeted to go to the full implementation, which is the six additional routes. And we certainly would, would look to do that.
Is there gonna be, I saw something in the notes about advertising and, is it a big group? And last, who's gonna perform these routes because it looked like it wasn't gonna be GMT?
So, we would negotiate with our current contractors. Essentially, what we'd be doing with contractors is not eliminating any number of the routes, just shifting around what they do. So, with these routes, it would be the three vehicles and drivers who currently drive our high, town high school routes. We would say, okay, can we redeploy those into the village? And here's the routes we've designed, let's, you know, let's put these in place.
Patrick?
Um, since I have eyes and ears everywhere. Um, uh, it's some, uh, just some additional notes I do have about the uh four route that we may wanna look into. I'm sure you guys will look into it, but just from a board level, it might also be useful to know that uh GMT does plan on examining the ridership of that route every six months at minimum to make sure that it stays in service. Um, so, we're not completely out of the woods yet, uh, but we will wanna make sure that we're encouraging, you know, the students who can use that route to hop on it whenever possible to make sure that those numbers stay up. Um, let me see, uh, yeah, it does look like they wanna talk to us directly about the Tuesday early release because they want EWSD to contract it, um, if it's going to happen. Um, and one other, uh, they wanted to make sure that we weren't going to contract with another provider in the fall to replace that route. Which I'm assuming, right, would be, I think, patently ridiculous, but they apparently want the reassurance from us that we're not going to go out and hire somebody else to run the Route four and then lose the potential revenue dollars for that. Um, and, oh, last note, yes, public involvement is the most that they've seen from a town in over a decade.
That's exciting.
I mean, I think it goes without saying that if we knew we had that transportation resource in place, if we gained additional resources, we would deploy them elsewhere.
Yeah.
That's pretty clear. Um, Brenton, and then, uh, two, after my question. Okay, Brenton?
So, um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the board having an opportunity to demonstrate its will in this conversation. But I think it's important to remember that this is not a board decision. Um, but I think what's, what's really important is that you're hearing, some of the feedback that you're hearing on your recommendation is the feedback that you'll hear from families and members of the community. So, um, it's kind of a first test of your, your solution. And so, I think that's important to take the feedback that you're hearing and think about whether or not there is a way that you can make some changes based on the concerns that you've initially heard, which you'll only hear, hear more greatly or amplified once it rolls out to the community at large.
Um, you spoke that the number of bus drivers is likely to increase. With that in mind, and I hate to ask the question, but is there gonna be a contingency plan if the bus drivers decreases, which is possible? Um, 'cause you're looking at Path B, and it's on the presumption that things, we have the current number of bus drivers and that does not change. But I, I think I'd be curious or interested to see what would be taken away if September rolls and we have less bus drivers. I, I think that's also a needed question and also possible plan. Um, not trying to be devil's advocate, but uh the last two years is, it's not been very demonstrative of uh increasing bus drivers.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to increase, right, okay.
Yeah, I had a slightly different uh view of this. And I kinda wonder if what GMT is really looking for is a guaranteed uh revenue stream throughout six months, one year. And that, you know, rather than sixty cents per student, because it will fluctuate at different times of the year, inclement weather, whatever. And that, given the average throughout an entire period, maybe we should take a look, or at least consider, from their standpoint. I mean, we have higher energy costs, labor costs are going up, that they have to be looking at that as well. So, maybe, you know, when we put a bus on a route, the numbers are all over the place. So, maybe we should look at it from their standpoint. And it's, it's uh, in order to provide reliable service, it may need some sort of additional uh effort to ensure a, a, a guaranteed stream. Just a, just a thought.
I think, you know, we'll be, we'll, we'll be undertaking negotiations with GMT. And, you know, our town and our taxpayers pay a, a fee to GMT. If they're reducing services and that fee is reduced, then it makes sense that our taxpayers then collectively get together to pay for that service that's serving us. If the fee isn't reduced and they're looking for additional money for less service, then I think as a community, we'd need to work with the select board and the, and the trustees and so forth, the, to, I mean, it's a negotiation. It's something we really want, and they want us, by evidence by Patrick saying, you know, important that our ridership that saved that route. 'Cause I'm, I'm not sure if that route, regardless to how many people showed up at that public meeting, if that route was sixty percent less ridership, if it would've been saved in the next gen study. So, you know, it, it's something to celebrate, us working together, we did that as a community. And as a community, we're paying all taxes towards the support of it, either to our municipality or to our school district. And I think we just need, I, I wanna make sure that GMT comes to the table with a holistic view and not trying to find different pockets, 'cause they aren't different pockets. They're different budgets, but they are different pockets.
Right, right, right. Right. I'm with, I, I just think it's worth considering.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Um, I just wanna get some clarification um with will of the board, as it were, and, you know, administrator approval. Um, in the policy, since we are requiring the submission of any contracts over fifteen thousand, which I'm assuming any change to these contracts will be. You know, you're coming to us now because you don't want to choose a path and then negotiate a contract and then send it to us and then have us say,
Right.
no, you know, exactly. So, I mean, Brendan put up the point, brought up the point of, you know, will of the board. I don't think it's a, because we're not looking for you to, you know, not choose a decision. But more is just, you wanna make sure that we're telling you what contracts we're going to approve and what contracts we won't.
Right.
Yeah.
That's accepted.
And also, I mean, depending upon that path, how we manage one point one million in, you know, revenue volatility, either short-term or long-term, and how we deal with the contracts. And then I think there's a part of it that, you know, if the board feels like it is, according to its policy interpretation, it never imagined K twelve routes or it just didn't feel that any of these worked within the policy intent, then I think then we'd have a problem. And I think that's a role of the board, is to monitor our work and make sure that it's in alignment with policy. So, I mean, we worked hard to try to find, this has been a, a topic that has crossed and blurred a lot of lines over time. And, and we're trying to learn from that experience and the good work that the policy subcommittee did to really say, what is the lens? And how does that lens then begin a path that the board's in full knowledge of? Lastly, we've also learned a lesson is that there's no reason to hope. Nobody, everybody wants communication early. They want either a most likely, or it sounds like the board also wants to start to deal with the worst case. Um, and what does it look like if we lose one, three, five, ten, or all of our drivers? Um, and we can do that, that there's, the contingency planning cannot be a one-to-many kind of process. And each one, to the degree that the board has expectations of thoroughness and complete cohesive plans on every contingency that's brought to them, we need to narrow the field to it. And it was, it was probably an error to try to create an option of three. Um, maybe that was a false choice, but it was, it was under, again, a premise that trying to provide the board with various options that, you know, worked with a limited amount of drivers that we don't like to have.
Thanks, Barry. So, I wanna remind us that, that Valwer could give some indication tonight about the contracts that Jamie should um pursue. Where the district is also going to be doing a two-month, sixty-day blitz to try to catch more car drivers. So, the contracts Jamie would be pursuing would be what we hope will be minimal. I don't, I'd love to hear the word, but I question how much time we should ask the administration to spend on planning for not having another drivers we have this year. Because we have been able to retain that number of drivers. So, who, um, you know, I think we should talk about that after we see what our will is about. We think for, um, and, um, we'll go through the hat exercise in just a second. So, Kim, can we, you still have questions or others?
Not really, just more to the framing of our role in this, which I'm very appreciative of. And, um, while certainly I don't think any of us would sit here and consider C, it was helpful to see it in the context of the other choices. Um, for the reasons that we can check off where it is in violation of policy, where it's, so even if not for us sitting here, 'cause we know this version of a look at the decision-making process has not been as cohesively presented because we've been looking at it in iterations. And so, for the benefit of our community, knowing we're looking at a plan for next year, I, I do think from my safe frame, the way it is, it was helpful to see all three and know why we would never consider C. This is a big picture.
And when Brian brought me the three to sit down and look at, I put your hats on as a board member and say, okay, so, if I'm gonna look at policy, how does each one match in contract and budget? So, that's um how we started to look at the three plans.
And for community process decision-making, it is best practice to not offer just an either-or, but to be able to have uh three options to look at, so you're not just presenting an either-or. So, thank you for that.
Well, then you always question like what else was out there, right?
You especially, I don't even.
Um, I just wanted to check on the facts around number of drivers that we had in August. If I recall correctly, the number that we've been sitting in stasis at for the last several months was built up to gradually over the first couple of months of the school year. And we had sort of a crisis in August where we did not even have the number that we currently have. So, my expectation would be that attrition occurs over the summer, because we are not employing those people over the summer at, at least the rate that it occurs during the school year, which for a long period, I think we averaged losing a driver every eight weeks. So, that's why I'm saying, like, I don't expect all of the nineteen that we currently have to be there on the first day of school. And I don't think that's an unreasonable likelihood.
So, at the close of the seventeen eighteen school year, there were thirteen general and route drivers. The, for the start of eighteen nineteen, Mountain Transit was able to pull essentially, they, they trained enough people to meet those thirteen, and then they pulled, they had another, they had additional trainees in the pipeline. And they pulled three retirees out of retirement to bridge the gap in August and September until those trainees became the additional three drivers. Um, we have seen, you know, as, when, when we, when I show you the, the transportation update, we have seen that out of those, we've, we've had enough attrition that now we're operating two regular routes with some of those fill-in drivers. Some of those very same retirees who are only driving a couple days a week now. So, there is, you know, we've been able to maintain at that number sixteen, but yes, there is, you know.
The three drivers are what came on, on August twenty ninth when we introduced high school transportation. So, that was, that was the three additional drivers that we were able to bring out of retirement and other ways. And then we've been, since then, have been looking to add anywhere from sixteen or eleven or seven or six or three drivers for Essex Junction. Those are all the models that we've discussed with the board um since August, is the, all those different models.
I mean, the, the good news is there's two people who got their CDLs who are gonna, who have said, they got their CDLs and they didn't wanna drive for six weeks and then at the school year end, they're on tap to start beginning of next school year. So, we're two ahead of the game right now. Well.
Okay, I'd like to move this along, 'cause we have a lot left to do. Andre, and then my plan is to um ask for a show of hands on the administration's recommendation. So, if you need to ask something else before we're really able to raise your hand or not raise your hand, announce the time to do it, Patrick.
Um, so far, the focus has been on Green Mountain Transit with, with their number of um buses and drivers. Or, I mean, the other contractor, Mountain Transit.
Mountain Transit.
Excuse me. Um, the other contractor that provides the service primarily for Westford, they have not encountered any situations where there are short drivers or they've been pretty steady and there's no inclination that they're losing drivers. Okay?
They, they have six and a couple, couple spares, and they're pretty stable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we ready for a show of hands on who thinks that contractor, contracts should um start, that negotiations and contracts be started based on- start, that negotiations and contracts be started based on Plan Path B? Um, who people can touch, okay, sure. And opposed? What? Uh, can we do two?
I just, I've expressed my concerns that I think it's over-optimistic. And I think i- in its general direction, I'm fine with it, 'cause I don't think we need door-to-door transit in the junction. But, um, I'm concerned.
So, um, I think the concerns are noted. Um, I think that, I think what might make sense is, let's see what this sixty-day push for a hundred and more drivers yields. And if it doesn't yield anything, then I think the board should come back and, um, talk with the administration about, oh, is there a contingency plan then that it should be bringing to the board? Does that make sense?
It's, the, the sooner that we can communicate to people which parts of our plan are open to reduction, the better. And I think it's clearer in Path A, what has been reduced. And in Path B, we're still trying to be everything to everyone, which leave, will leave people in some doubt as to if we get to August and we have that horrible meeting that we had last August, who's gonna be getting the bad news? So...
So, I, I think the communication to families on the timeline starts in June, right?
Uh, we had hoped to start to communicate to families this week going into next and it would be in Board Takeout. It would be live here. This presentation that the board has is intended to go up tomorrow on the website.
So, how does that interact with the fact that you're making this big push to try to find more drivers?
So, I mean, we, we've moved back and, and we can visit again sort of the, the, sort of the, the, the will of the board and, and how we, how we might wanna go forward. But, so, we've got some, I believe, clear enough direction that we're pursuing Path B. And we wanna let people know that starting immediately.
Okay.
And we're gonna push. I, I'm, I guess, you know, I work from a side of being already accused of being overly optimistic and sometimes chastised for being hopeful. So, moving to a, to a, we will not recruit one more person feels to me that a, a large movement. If we're gonna start to look at contingency planning of less, um, the conversation would be really enlightening for me. It's like, do we plan on one less, three less, five less? And then, I think we're also at that point of, you know, how do we maintain a policy if we believe we cannot provide it? I mean, when we start to, to, I mean, 'cause that seems, unless we're at some point where we'll never have less than this. And maybe we could just write a policy for K-8 transportation. But otherwise, I think we'll just be in a perpetual reimagining of our transportation. Um, and maybe that's not what you mean. And, you know, I, I know that we, I'm nervous about the retention of employees and the attraction of them. But I feel like we've got a long track record of being able to at least fill what we've have. I think there's always was pessimism whether we would be able to start a brand-new district, um, and be able to, to come up with that number of drivers.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? All right. Next item is, can we make adjustments?
Uh, what's your, what's your interest in, we have procedures and the status update that we're also asked for this meeting?
Can I just ask, is there any issue with putting this up on the website, not having already spoken with our contractors?
We're completely public at this point.
Okay.
I mean, there, I, I think a strict, a strict way to do this would have been to ask for it to be entirely in executive session. But I think that that's not what the board's ever indicated it wants with regards to transportation.
No. And we're not talking about, you know, going out entirely to bid on the entirety of the project. It's changing the contracts we currently have, is what I'm understanding. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. You're right.
Okay. So, what else do you plan to talk about on transportation? You sent us two very large documents that are not for board approval.
Um...
So, what you, what you, um, guess I'm not sure what I'm looking for.
That's...
Do you want questions, Ken, please?
Yeah, I, I got the sense from the s- policy subcommittee, we had a deadline of March thirty-first. We informed the board, we went through, we've now delivered actually two documents with regards to our procedures, operating practices, and an employee manual. And I'm, you know, there, there may be an interest for the board to give a, a round of applause to Jamie. And if people have...
It's hard at nine-thirty at nine.
But I'm trying to navigate it. Perhaps the chair or the policy subcommittee could help navigate to the degree of where does, is the board, are we good with this? I mean, this is a, this is a process that these are procedures, so they'll actually change over time and, and should change to some degree now based upon a strategic direction that we just took.
Kelly?
Um, so having been on that, um, subcommittee, I did read through the procedures. Um, I didn't read the employee handbook, so if there's anything surprising there, I'll get to it next week when my taxes aren't exploding. But, um, most of my comments I can just send you 'cause it's like, things like, what does this mean? But, um, the one thing that was relevant to things that we had discussed in the subcommittee that I noticed was that, um, further discussion of what would be reported to the board about the performance of the transportation system. And I think we had discussed maybe, um, the board giving you some direction each year about sort of what kind of data we were interested in. Um, because I thought that the, the list that's mentioned in the procedure doesn't really align with what we had discussed in the subcommittee. Things like, you know, we have this outline of how long kids are gonna spend on buses. Are we meeting that? You know, what percentage of our students are stuck on a bus or waiting for a bus outside of this target zone? And kind of understanding those things about the student experience of buses, not just like how many disciplinary issues were there this year.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that's a really good point. I think that when we, when it comes to monitoring policy, I think it's always good to check in with the board prior to delivering the report, so that there are no sort of missteps in terms of not meeting expectations, but not knowing the expectation was there. So, I realize that, you know, we can't necessarily have a moving target in terms of the evidence, but sometimes there are issues or there's a period of time where there's specific questions about evidence that might be of interest to the board. So, I think that's a good check, just to be like, okay, in, you know, two meetings from now, we're gonna provide some, a report. What are the specific questions you have so we can gear the presentation toward those questions?
For, Becky, uh, what that bring forward that you were thinking about providing that more? And then, I think it'll be easier for the board then to see what they think is missing.
That's a good point. That's great. That'd be really helpful.
Okay, good. Kim?
I was just gonna say, we don't wanna start pulling out things that aren't easy for them to track after the fact. So, I think we need to be sensitive to the expectation and to the extent we can set some sort of standard around it, I think it makes sense. I don't think it would be reasonable to something that isn't easily tracked or isn't already been tracked.
Yep.
And say, oh, by the way, how was that going?
On a radio station.
So, what do we like most? Does it count?
It's, it's a long document. It's fifty, fifty-four pages, so. I just had a couple, I didn't get through the whole document, but I did have a couple of general questions. Is the discipline that's consequences that is in his document congruent to that discipline policy? That's one of the questions.
What they're based on, yes.
And the second question, uh, in, in their, today we have a little bit different situation with Narcan and EpiPens and all kinds of health-related issues. I did wanna just ask from a clarification standpoint, in event of emergency on, student emergency while on the bus, is this document adequate to cover? You know, I don't know what the, what you expect in terms of the role of the driver to address emergencies. But there are certain emergencies where action has to be taken now.
Yep. So, the emergency training is covered in the employee handbook?
Okay.
Uh, we, we discussed that we will have training and then the specifics of the training is delivered by different staff, nurses, uh, transportation staff, uh, physical therapists to deal with the different...
That was the document I didn't get to. Okay, thank you.
So, I just wanna express, as a, as a member of the policy subcommittee that discussed the deadline for these procedures, I just wanna express my appreciation for the fact that they were delivered on time. And also the fact that they're, they look very comprehensive. Um, I read most of the document and, um, it's, uh, it's, it's an impressive feat to pull all, all of it together. And I'm sure you'll continue to make improvements as you go. So, thank you very much.
I would echo that as someone who took all the documents. And it is impressive. And I would just say, I'm glad we waited to have the visitor advice. I'm sure it's incorporated in here as well. So, thank you. So, Brian, anything else you need from the board?
No, the status update was provided in writing. If there's any questions, Jamie can answer those. But otherwise, um, that's also part of, this slideshow is on the board's site as well.
Any questions on this stuff, update? Okay. Now, we can move on to the calendar.
So, the superintendent's recommend, my recommendation is for the last day, we're not going to have any more snow days. Um, Friday. Um, to be June fourteenth, it's a Friday. We originally were, um, the last day was scheduled for Wednesday. This brings us to a Friday instead of having students come back, um, on the Monday, which would be a hundred seventy-eight days, which the board does, um, granted for the students. So, the, ending on a Friday would give a hundred seventy-seven days for most of our schools. Um, the Agency of Education does require a hundred seventy-five. Westford did have more snow days. Um, and so, but I also would like to have them end on a Friday and the district do that together. Their teachers do, at Westford will go, um, a little longer in, um, into that week. But, so, I did give you the recommendation in more detail. But do you have any questions about that?
So, um, Tom?
So, I'm trying to understand. So, was it just Westford K through eight that didn't have school those days?
Correct. Yes.
With a high school student from Westford?
There was an excuse. If they could not get to school, they're excused.
What's, what's, so everyone but Westford K through eight could end on Wednesday? Correct.
No, so their, their day was Wednesday. We had three snow days. So, it would bring, if we just think about the schools, um, the former junk, the village and the town, just think about those.
There's all the other schools but Westford.
Yeah, so that would bring them to Monday and that's, that's following for a hundred seventy-eight days. According to our law, it's a hundred seventy-five days that students need in school. So, what I'm asking for is to grant that Monday just as a free day for them and have a hundred seventy-seven days, which brings the students to meet on, to end on Friday as a full day.
Westford K through eight had five.
They had five, five days.
The minimum is a hundred and seventy-five.
Correct.
They'll have a hundred and seventy-seven if I go on Friday.
They will. This board, um, has declared a hundred seventy-eight days for students.
We have a contract that says a hundred seventy-eight to...
Gotcha, okay. That's the one.
And, um, teacher days are one hundred eighty-nine.
That makes more sense than just for families, it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we need, so we need to approve that last day of school as...
As June fourteenth, Friday, June fourteenth, and then the teacher days.
Okay. So, and to take motion, uh, we, Brian, any further, um, snow days? Um, declare that the last student day will be Friday, June fourteenth. That the last teacher day for all schools except for Westford will be June eighteenth. And that the last teacher day, and the last teacher day in Westford, June twentieth. You gonna make that motion?
Kim just did, but, Kim did, but I will...
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Um, task team membership. So, um, so, right now, we have a communications testing and negotiations council. Um, we are having some conversation about having a governance testing. What I would ask board members to do is to let me know what they're interested in being assigned to. And also to let me know if there are any task teams that we don't have that you want the board to talk about creating. Okay?
Yep.
So, I'll send out a reminder email, um, to get you to let me know. Communications testing, Patrick?
Um, one thing that is assigned, um, that I would ask, um, if the clerk is gonna be participating more in agenda meetings, um, sitting on the RAB. Um, I'd like to give someone else a chance to step up and it would also help me, you know, alleviate my schedule for taking on more things. So, you know, Liz, I don't know if you have any interest, and I mean certainly, you know, anyone else on the board. But I think Liz would be a great choice if it was something that she wanted to step into.
So, this is doing board takeaways?
Oh, no, the RA, the RAB, the RAB for the Center for Tech.
Oh, the tech center. I'm sorry.
I misunderstood that also.
I misunderstood.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll step down from takeaways in the next section. Don't you worry. It'll hold up.
So, um, so, Liz, one of people who might be interested in running that position, let me know. Thanks for the reminder, that that's also something that's out there.
It's roughly like a five or six day, like, meetings per year, so it's not terribly intensive. But they also been conflicting a little bit with my daughter's pickup times from school. So, having someone who can actually be there for the whole of it, or doesn't have a nine-year-old tagging along with them. Although she loves the cookies.
Manda, I should probably connect with you too, 'cause we'll be launching the long-range facility planning study, which will need some board membership. And then, um, also there's the Center for Tec, uh, the CTE Corp., which is the, uh, land development corporation of arm of the Center for Technology that builds the houses.
Right.
That hasn't had a board member for a while. That shows like...
Marla expressed interest in serving as a civilian on the facility planning.
Yep, she did. Okay, so I'll put all this out there when I send my mail. Okay. All right. Um, communications testing.
We did it.
We did it.
That's what we're working on.
Okay, good. So, um, our next meeting, oh no, local and statewide updates, um...
You already cheered for Kim, Liz, and we...
Yes, we did. Congratulations. Annual meeting and vote. I think the results are wonderful. The turnout is very concerning. Brenton, do you want to bring up?
I agree, it's very concerning. Yeah, I mean, I think that one of the concerns that I have, and I expressed it in an email, is the fact that civic engagement, voter participation around the development and approval of a school budget is really sad, in my opinion, and it certainly is not for the lack of trying to communicate and be open to participation by the community. And so, I think that, you know, one of the, there is no easy fix, there's no simple solution, but I think one of the things we should try to consider as a board is whether or not we can find a way to, to merge our date with town meeting day. If we can, over time, I realize it takes time, migrate so that we can take advantage of the day where most people are plugged in and thinking about voting, if they're thinking, if they're voting at all, that's the day that they're thinking about it. And an additional vote a month later has always been problematic, but none so more than this particular election. To have an eighty-one million dollar budget approved by, or voted on by a thousand people in our community when there are fifteen thousand registered voters is just not acceptable, in my opinion. So anything we can do to begin to move that needle in the opposite direction, I think is an, is an important thing the board should be considering.
So, I would like to put this, instead of having this discussion at nine forty-eight tonight, I would like to put this on the agenda for our May fourteenth grading, and we can talk about the ins and outs and the timelines. Diane, I appreciate that you letting me know that the select board and the trustees in the town and village are putting a pretty widespread, um, expansive community engagement effort. I have emailed the chair of the select board and said, this is a discussion that we might be having when we vote, and, um, so I know it's something they're talking about too, so could we be part of that discussion? Yes?
For, for, May fourteenth, could you have the administration tell us what the challenges would be to move to March, because this district, for the bulk of it, has been doing Aprils for probably twenty, twenty-five years at this point, Tom?
At least.
At least, and prior to that, it used to be May and March in our respective districts, Westford being March and Essex Junction being May, with our compatriots out in the center being sometime, sometime in between, that you guys might have a better idea than I do, before nineteen ninety-five. So, um, I, I would like to see that as to what that would be, how much, when, when would the calendar start for us? I know when it starts for the village, they start in October. So I'm, I'm...
So that's the kind of thing.
That's what I'd like to see.
That's the whole discussion thing that we have to have.
What I will, I will have hopefully by then is a graph of such about how voter turnout has been so terrifically awful, be perfectly blunt, over the last, oh, last eight or nine years, that the data that we're having, and, and just hopefully by that point in time, I'll have some fill in the blanks. But quite frankly, town meeting day hasn't exactly been a screamer either, okay?
Speaking with eleven percent.
Oh, hey, if we get eleven percent, I'm shocked. So, um, but I'll be able to detail that for you by then. I'll, I'll, I'll put together a chart.
And I have all my Westford town reports, so if you're interested in...
Oh, Westford, I got, that's, Westford isn't my problem. It's Essex that I'm having a problem with.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, so let's see, where are we at? Anything else on local and statewide updates? All right, so we have the board retreat on April thirtieth. We're finalizing the agenda with Brian Regan. It looks like we're gonna start with dinner at five. We'll get something asking you what you want, probably, but the meeting itself will start at five thirty. We're probably gonna have to do some professional appointments that night, but that should be pretty fast. We would like to talk about moving that second meeting in May to the fourteenth, because the twenty-first is honors night, and we have at least one board member who absolutely, if not two, who absolutely would make the choice to go to honors night. Plus, I think it would be wonderful with board members at the opportunity to go. So can we move the meeting to the fourteenth? Or, or, so, something with that?
Yeah. May have a conflict, but if I'm the only person, then it's totally fine.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna keep moving. So, takeaways, um...
Okay, now, no, I'm dreadfully serious. I really very much appreciated doing the takeaways for the last two years, but I also would be very appreciative if someone else would like to step up and do them just, you know, I found myself falling behind on them, and they definitely deserve, you know, a deeper look than I can, you know, really, you know, kind of put into them right now. So, just a thought, if anyone else wants to do it or has been burning, so write up those takeaways.
Patrick, would you be responsible for this one?
Yeah, I can do this one.
And I'll put that out in the mail, and that would give time for people to think about what they're willing or interested in volunteering to do across all the things that are out there. Thank you. So from tonight, I think the, um, presentations on instructional methods is worth talking about. Clearly, transportation is worth talking about. I think it would be good to talk about that straight board and the two positions, and would it be appropriate to link to the integrated field or not? Do you feel like that's...
Let me think about that.
Yeah, because that may be too educational.
Too much, too jargony. I don't jargony.
So, you're gonna think about that?
Yeah.
Anything else that folks think we should do as takeaways from this meeting? You should probably mention the last day of school. Kim, Kim, her to put that out there, not...
And a pitch for attending May seventh.
Yes, yes, you.
Okay, I have one more.
Yes.
Tomorrow, we have the quality of youth development informational meeting happening to invite community partners to be part of the opportunity to look at our three communities through the lens of ten different benchmarks that highlight welcoming and elevating youth voice and empowering youth in our communities, not just within our schools, but with our communities and our municipalities. Really inviting students to feel engaged in their communities and hoping that engagement brings them back. So what can youth bring to our communities through leadership and what can leadership bring to our youth through our communities? So, that is happening tomorrow night from seven to eight. Here, light refreshments, lively conversation. And it's a time-bound project. This project should be done, you know, highlighting and looking at these ten buckets and providing evidence for how we're doing it, or the things that we're not doing, the plan for how we would get there, like a youth advisory council, not in schools, like in our communities, and a youth conference held annually that would be planned for and, and topics chosen by youth. So those are two things that I know we don't have, that'll be looking for a lot of student participation, but also community partners in several other domains. So please, if you're available, that'd be great. If not, we'll continue updating people on where you might invite yourself into the process, and we will be done with this by September, October, and wrapping up by November. So, that's attractive. It's not a three-year term. So, thank you. I'm sorry, I, that's all the way tomorrow is savage.
That's seven, yeah.
Anything, anything else? All right, then I'll undertake motion that we move into executive session to discuss employee negotiations as a matter for under Title One, Section three thirteen. Thank you. In the discussion, alloots in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. And I will invite Beth to join us.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.